All right, I'd like to call to order this regular session, March 7th, 2016. Council meeting, this Crescent City, City Council. Is there anything to report out of closed session?
Nothing to report this evening.
All right, thank you. Could you please take role?
Councilmember Holly.
Here.
Councilmember Murray.
Here.
Councilmember Short.
Here.
Pro Temenscore.
Here.
Mayor Gasno.
Here, and Mr. Holly's going to lead us today in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, we have no acknowledgements tonight. We do have five items on our consent calendar. Number one, approval of the regular meeting minutes from the February 16th, 2016 council meeting. Receive and file the warrant claims list for the period February 6th, 2016 through February 26th, 2016. Receive and file the bi-week payroll report for the periods ending February 20th, 2016, paid on February 26th, 2016. Accept donation from Tamaki Foundation. Approve training and travel requests for police officer Aaron King and K-9 Django in the amount of $9,595.73 for police K-9 tracking training courses. Appoint Brad Keim to the City of Crescent City Plan Commission to fill the vacant position. Is there any public comment on our consent calendar? Okay, see no public comment on our, is there no closed public comment? Bring it back to the council, is there any discussion?
I just had a question, Mr. Taylor, was Mr. Keim going to be here tonight for us to recognize him, or did you know?
I don't know.
Okay, I didn't see him, but I just thought if he was, it would be appropriate for us to welcome him, but that's all I have.
All right. Do you have any motions?
I move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
All right, we have a second. We have a motion and a second, can you please pull the vote?
Councilmember Holly.
Yes.
Councilmember Murray.
Yes.
Councilmember Short.
Yes.
Pro Temenscore.
Yes.
Mayor Gasno.
Yes, thank you, and that passes unanimously. We are on to our reports and presentations. Item number six, presentation by Randy Hooper, Assistant Director of Del Norte County Community Development Department and County Consultant Kaufman Associates on the county's airport land use compatibility plan. Go ahead, Mr. Hooper.
Good evening, Mayor Gassino, members of the council.
Microphone, wait a second.
Testing, testing.
There we go.
Let's try this again. Good evening, Mayor Gasno, members of the council. Appreciate the opportunity to be before you tonight to talk about this project that the county is putting forward. My name is Randy Hooper. I'm the Assistant Director of the county's Community Development Department, which includes the County Planning Division. Just for a little bit of background before we get into the presentation, in 2014, the county applied for a grant from the State Department of Transportation. This was for the development specifically of a countywide airport land use compatibility plan. We've subsequently been awarded $135,000 from the state to develop this ALUCP, as we call it, and this would be for the coverage of the county's three public use airports. Excuse me. So as you all know, the county owns the Crescent City Airport, which is a public use airport. However, in addition to that, we also do own two other airports, one in Gaski and one in Klamath. That would be Wardfield in Gaski and Macbeth Field in Klamath. In April of 2015, we were notified that the grant had been awarded. Shortly after the grant was awarded, we posted an RFP, which invited qualified airport planning consultants to submit bids on this project. As a result of the RFP process, Kaufman Consultants was identified as the lowest responsive bidder, and we've since entered into an agreement with them to assist in the development of our countywide ALUCP. The agreement with Kaufman includes assistance in the formation of a brand-new, brand-new county airport land use commission as required by state law, and I'm sure we're going to get into that in a little bit with our consultant. Kaufman Consultants has been conducting airport planning since 1979, and airport planning is all they do. So we're very fortunate, we feel we're very fortunate to have entered into a partnership with Kaufman. They're very specialized and they're very good at what they do. They come to us highly recommended by our contacts at the Division of Aeronautics, as well as other planning agencies who they have worked with here in the state of California. As I said, we're very pleased to be working with them on this very important community project, and with that, I'm pleased to introduce Mr. Dave Fitz from Kaufman Consultants, who is our principal point of contact for this project, and will now take over this presentation.
Thank you. Welcome, Mr. Fitz.
Thank you, good evening. I've got about a 10-minute presentation here. Again, most of this is informational. The, as Randy had mentioned, we're just getting started. We prepared a white paper that really talked about the options for formation of an airport land use commission. I may call it ALUC for short, but let me see if I can click through this without, all right. Why is it needed? Randy had mentioned there's a state, there's actually a state, California State Aeronautics Act, and it was also codified in Public Utility Code 21670 that required, and talks about the formation of an airport land use commission. Its role really is to protect the public safety. It also provides a way of kind of methodically organizing or being prepared for development around an airport, provides guidelines. Many times airports have issues with trees or development encroaching. Airports are notorious for having infrastructure go out to them, and then it's easy for developers to tie into that infrastructure, whether it's utilities, sewer water, things of that nature. So they kind of attract development, so what we want to do is just make sure it's done in an orderly fashion. Now, how will this affect Crescent City? The first thing that comes out of a development of an airport land use compatibility plan is going to be compatibility zones. We start out with an airport influence area. That's usually the area that encompasses the traffic pattern around the airports. So in this case, we'll be looking at each of the three airports and developing an airport influence area, looking at their airspace and how aircraft come into the area and go out of the area. We'll also be looking at their airport layout drawings and see if they have any future growth, whether it's runway extensions, additional hangars, new terminal, things of that nature, to see how that will affect the growth. Once we establish where the runways are going to be now and in the future, because this is a 20-year plan that we're developing, then we start building safety zones. We look at noise exposure, as well as airspace protection and other hazards to flight. So once those are developed, some of those may fall within city limits, and if they do, then there'll be policies that will help guide development. Now, keep in mind, airport land use compatibility plans do not affect existing development by state law. So if it's there, it's there, it won't change it. But anything new that may come along potentially could have some type of recommendation that would go with it to guide that development. And finally, once that plan is officially adopted, then the area jurisdictions would come back and look at their general plans and their implementation ordinances to make sure that they're consistent with the plan. Now, the Airport Land Use Commission has two primary functions. The first, as I mentioned, is to develop that airport land use compatibility plan, and the second is to help jurisdictions by reviewing some of their land use planning, development proposals and things of that nature throughout the process. They also look at airport plans as well, to make sure that if they're consistent with the plan, so if there's something new, they do update their airport master plan, they'll come back and they'll look at the compatibility plan. In this case, then the compatibility plan would have to be adjusted to accommodate that growth or lack of growth, or whatever they choose to do. Now, there are six choices here that are provided in the Public Utility Code. There's the Airport Land Use Commission, Designated Body, Designated Agency, and there's a couple of exemptions, inter-county ALUC, and an unknown. And you'll see that there are two counties that are unknown. We're going to fix that on one of them. So as far as, let's start working our way back up, inter-county ALUC, that really, that option is really for an airport that may fall right on a county line, so that it would share safety zones with another county. That's not the case here, so that, that one would drop off the list. The exemption, there are four counties that are codified in the Public Utilities Code as having an exemption, Los Angeles, San Diego, Santa Cruz, and then one more that escapes me that evolved and codified as having something special, and in this case, like San Diego has an airport authority that's, that not only manages their large airport, but all of the county airports as well. So they've taken on the Airport Land Use Commission role themselves. The Designated Agency, that one's a little tricky. That would mean that Del Norte County would develop an Airport Land Use Commission and the City of Crescent City would, because they're an incorporated jurisdiction. Given that the city doesn't own and operate an airport, doesn't seem like a viable option for us. Designated Body and Airport Land Use Commission are really the two viable options here. Let's talk about the Airport Land Use Commission. Airport Land Use Commission, the way that the Public Utility Code works, we take two people from the Board of Supervisors, two people from the Incorporated Cities, two people that are airport experts, and then those six get together and they vote one person at large. The problem with Airport Land Use Commission outright is twofold. One, you have a brand-new commission, you'll need to find meeting space, a budget, and all of that, all that stuff that goes with it, and since the city doesn't own and operate an airport, they have a very dominant influence on this Airport Land Use Commission when they may or may not have anybody within the safety zones. So that one's a little, a little problematic. The Designated Body seems to make a lot of sense. There are several groups that might fill that role. We have a list coming up here. We have the Del Norte Planning Commission, the Board of Coast Regional Airport Authority, and the Del Norte Board of Supervisors, and the Del Norte Local Transportation Commission. All four of those would fill that role, with the exception of the Regional Airport Authority. There is a requirement that at least two of the seven members be aviation experts or play some role in aviation. So with the exception of that, the one that we seem to be leaning more to is the County Planning Commission, since this is really a land use role, adding or supplementing the County Planning Commission with two aviation experts when they want to convene as an Airport Land Use Commission, seemed to make a lot of sense for us. So, moving on, what's next? Okay, well, everything really falls onto the Board of Supervisors. What we have is the Board of Supervisors. Once they've, they've taken our report and made some decisions, they'll develop a resolution, possibly designating the County Planning Commission as the Airport Land Use Commission. Next, they'll have to specify two members with aviation experience or expertise onto that commission. They'll have to hold their first Airport Land Use Commission meeting and develop their protocols, selection of officers, duties, roles, things of that nature, similar to any commission. And then finally, they'll have to prepare and adopt an Airport Land Use Compatibility Plan. So with that, I know I went through it fairly quickly, but if there's any questions, Randy and I are here to answer.
Any questions from the council? Comments?
I have a couple real quick ones.
Sure.
What is, I understand that you, you are providing this initial service, but for ongoing funding for this, who pays for this on an ongoing basis? I see staff is involved, whatever staff's involved, there's some cost.
That is a great question. This is what's generally referred to as an unfunded mandate. A lot of times, and it really, this will be part of the preparation of the plan, is typically, and we haven't really kind of started into that, but typically there'll be fees charged if a substantial review is needed or anything of that nature. It really depends on, obviously, county would be support. I don't know if you've given any thought to how that would go.
Sure. No, that is a good question, and it's something, as Dave mentioned, you know, being an unfunded mandate, obviously, we're not happy about, but it is a mandate. At this point, it appears if it is the direction we had with the County Planning Commission, assuming this responsibility, that it would be a cost to the County General Fund. Hopefully, we can get some assistance from partners, but this is part of introducing the topic for discussion to potential partners and stakeholders in this process, is to ferret out some of these issues, but certainly at this point, it appears that the majority of the costs for ongoing operating expenses would be at the cost of the county.
Thank you. And the only other question I have is, I looked at next steps, and it talks about who the members would consist of, and the city wouldn't necessarily be a part of that membership, and I'm wondering if we shouldn't at least have one member there to hear what's being said and to make it easier to clarify positions as they come forward to the council.
Sure. And as Dave also suggested, the, if we go the direction of the County Planning Commission, we would be designating that body with two additional members. Those two additional members do need to have aviation expertise pursuant to the statute, and what we're thinking is possibly dipping into the Border Coast Regional Airport Authority, who's represented by the city, where there's city representation at BACRA, so that could be an option for getting some city engagement into that process, whether it be a BACRA member, a planning commission, city planning commission member, but those are issues we would have to work out, but we certainly wouldn't want to leave anyone not at the table that would like to be there.
Yes, I think about the airspace and how planes are often going right over the city, even though we don't have land use issues necessarily, our residents are impacted.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
So I'm wondering about, so you have the Planning Commission, so you would add two additional experts, which we have plenty of in Del Norte County, aeronautical experts, I believe. I do sit on the BACRA board right now, representing the city, so I'm aware of a few that we have. So you would add those to the Planning Commission, you're saying?
Yeah.
And then, and then you could have the city member from BACRA sit on that planning, that Planning Commission additional body that you're talking about? So it wouldn't, wouldn't be just the County Planning Commission?
Correct.
It would be a different body in a sense?
When they convene as the Airport Land Use Commission, they would be convening as the Airport Land Use Commission. They would just happen to be principally composed of the County Planning Commission.
Right.
But whenever they vote on things, whenever they take actions, whenever they adopt plans, they would be doing so as the Airport Land Use Commission.
Right. And I just want to point out, I'm sure you guys all know this, but the District One Supervisor appoint, which is within the city limits, appoints someone to the County Board of Supervisors, so there would be city representation at the county level in that sense. We have that now.
Yeah, that's a good point.
I'm not sure who, who the representative is.
Would that be Supervisor Getlin's district?
At, right now?
Currently, yeah, that would be Commissioner Jacobs, who I believe may actually have some aviation background.
Okay. I don't know who's sitting there now.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
That's a good point, though.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just have one question, Randy. Then, is your interpretation that, that a city member of the, of BACRA would qualify as an aviation expert? Because that's what I'm sort of hearing, is that if the city is going to have, under this, this plan, using the County Planning Commission, if the city's going to have a representative, it would be, if they, it would only be under this aviation expert clause being appointed from BACRA? Is that, is that what I'm hearing you say?
A qualification of one of these two additional members would be that they have aviation expertise. If there's a person from this, that the city can put forward who has aviation expertise, who maybe has some participation in BACRA, I think they would qualify.
But not just being, being represented on BACRA?
Correct, yeah. By virtue of being a member of BACRA, I don't think that would constitute aviation expertise in this case, but it's, it's a good.
I wouldn't claim that.
Well, and also, this is very early in the process, I would point out, and this is the introduction of the topic for the benefit of the council. These are all issues that we're hoping to resolve as we, as we proceed with the development of this plan, so we appreciate the questions and the feedback.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
How does the statute define aviation expertise, Dave?
Well, aviation expertise, generally somebody that either works in aviation, whether they're part of the airport, or somebody that flies, somebody that has some intimate knowledge of aviation, and they have some basic criteria. It's not a whole lot of detail in the statute, but basic understanding of aviation.
Not necessarily currently, maybe past aviation experience at work, too?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We're looking forward to this develop, as it develops in the future.
All right, on to our next item, which would be communications. This is the public comment period. Any member of the audience is invited to address the City Council on any matter that was, is within the jurisdiction of the City of Crescent City. Comments of public interest or on matters appearing on the agenda are accepted. Note, however, that the council is not able to undertake extended discussion or act on non-agendized items. Such items can be referred to staff for appropriate action, which may include placement on a future agenda. Any comments that are not at the microphone are out of order and will not be part of the public record. After receiving your recognition from myself, please state your name and city or county residency for the record. Public comment is limited to three minutes. Is there any public comment?
My name is Donna Westfall, I live in the city, and I'd like this made part of the public record. The definition of insanity is paying twice the amount you can afford for a sewer plant. My message is the same today as in 2007 during the workshops when I just moved to this town. The only difference is that today I know the names of many of the players who put this town on the road to bankruptcy. Let's start with former Public Works Director Jim Barnes. He was raised here, he moved back here to work for the city, and at the same time, to develop real estate behind Walmart. He needed water and sewer to his subdivision, he got it, and in 2008, when the national economy tanked, he's lost his shirt on his subdivision, which to this day is 95% undeveloped. Fortunate for him, he switched gears, brought in his buddies, and to create a ghetto by building low-income apartments. He convinced and worked in concert with some of the council members of 2007, Irene Tynes, Dennis Burns, Richemay, and Kelly Shlong. Three of those people have moved out of town. However, today, you can't watch those videos or see many of the documents and reports because the city has destroyed them. Jim learned that by doubling sewer rates, the city would be approved for a $43.8 million loan instead of the pre-approved, not $20 million loan. The Water Quality Control Board has to accept some culpability because they bought into the insanity, or let's call it what I believe it is. I believe that fraud was committed to get approval on a loan of this amount for this little town. Then, while construction was going on by Rolland and his partners, whistleblowers tried talking to our city administration about the corruption taking place. Instead of listing, some were fired, others took retirement. And as I sat in that chair on the City Council, instead of my fellow council members listening to me, they tried to shut me up by censuring me, removing me from all committees, not allowing me to speak to the subcontractors, so I returned to the grand jury. I've since learned that presiding Judge William Follett is part and parcel of this insanity. In my opinion, he is responsible for stopping a thorough investigation into allegations of graft, fraud, and corruption that took place on the sewer plant upgrade and expansion. The city keeps hiring Will Dan to come up with these unrealistic numbers to repay the loan. You've done it again, and even with this new scheme, the city cannot repay the loan because the loan amount is too large. Most of you sitting on the City Council today have lived here far longer than I have, know these people far better than I do. For you to approve constant rate increases means that you will not look beyond your noses to the real problems. You're only dealing with the symptoms. The real problem is this. Deal with the people that put us into this situation, bottom line. You have a customer base that is getting smaller, you have a huge wealth for society, you can't bring in any businesses because the workforce is substandard. For those of us.
Your three minutes are up, Donna. Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Please.
No comment, sir. Hi, I'm Connie Morrison, and along the same vein, I sat there while Donna was sitting up here, and I had just moved here, and I was wondering what was going on, and it just didn't seem right. They said there was a cease and desist order for the, for the wastewater treatment plant because it was overflowing on rainy days, but there's also a lot of holes in the transfer pipes, and when the water would raise and the pipes were under the water, it would suck into the pipes and go on to the wastewater treatment plant. So instead of fixing the wastewater treatment plant, and Jim Barnes said the only way to fix it was to expand the, expand it, the way to fix it was to fix all the holes in the pipes, and then you wouldn't have all that extra stuff. But through my readings, what I found out was, actually what was happening was there was fish effluent being put into the ocean by the harbor wastewater treatment plant, and there was also a cease and desist order on the harbor wastewater treatment plant. And what eventually happened was they took the harbor wastewater plant, destroyed it, and took all the fish effluent that was going into the ocean, piped it into the brand-new Crescent City wastewater treatment plant to dump into the ocean. So the rate payers of Crescent City, your, the leadership of the Crescent City, should be reward, reimburse the money that was being. should be reward, reimburse the money that was being, that the wastewater treatment plant over there was being paid. Also, in the meantime, Jim Barnes was building the houses behind Walmart, and I just wanted to show you, and that was annexed land. And here is Hidden Creek Apartment Investors LP. He owns part of it, and I don't know who Hidden Creek Investors, Apartment Investors LP is, but it is now worth $9,800,000. And here's, here's Jim Barnes' 700 forms that says he didn't make any money, didn't have anything going on. So when Donna says fraud, I think she's kind of maybe right. Something's not right. Then also, how many properties does Crescent City own? They just counted votes. If you have a, people could vote if they wanted the rates increased or not. And what about all, this is all the, all the properties that all her county owns, and these are Crescent City addresses. Who voted for that one, and what were the votes? To increase the sewer rate or not to?
Anybody else?
Jesse Salisbury, Crescent City. I'll kind of segue off of this whole sewer thing, since we're all on the topic. Yeah, when we first started this, the problem that we had was an INI problem, inflow and infiltration. I've come up here dozens and dozens of times talking about this. I'm glad to see that we're finally taking care of a little bit of the problem. This white elephant was brought to the attention of the City Council from the very beginning. Because during the, during the rainy season, when we actually have less people in town because the tourism is, is gone, we have up to 10 times the effluent going into our sewage treatment plant. So the problem was, like, like this lady here was talking about, was the, you know, the sewer pipes are leaking, you know, the groundwater is raising, and, and so we're actually treating rainwater. So the problem, the problem was never that the sewage treatment plant wasn't able to handle the sewage of the people of Crescent City, was that it was unable to treat the rainwater. And so for us to be, for us to go and spend all this money on a sewage treatment plant and talk about growth, growth was never the problem, it was, it was too much rainwater. Okay, on to something else. We have a piece of property over on 15K behind a taco place. It used to be a berry patch that, I used to love going and getting berries from there, the deal property. It was paved and turned into a parking lot, which, in my opinion, didn't improve the looks of it at all. We have a, in the beginning, we called it a tree ordinance, but I was told it is now a landscaping ordinance. But that ordinance states that if you put up a parking lot, you need to have a parking space for every, or a tree for every five parking spaces, or a fraction thereof. So I went over there and counted, there's 32 of them, so they always some trees over there. Well, that's still been sitting there with no trees, and I brought this up at a couple other city council meetings here, and nobody's ever gotten back to me. I went down to City Hall and really didn't get much done down there. When, when, when the project was started, Mr. Taylor said that he was the one, he didn't bother to make them comply with the landscaping ordinance and the trees, so, so it just looks like a parking lot, which doesn't look very good for the city. Also, a pro, a project that I've been talking about for 13 years now, back when Dave Wells was on, I can't tell you how many years, how many people that was ago, I wanted some teas burned into the, in, in front of Chase Bank, so that people know where to park. Because there's really, it's the only bank that doesn't have a, a parking, a parking lot.
Right.
And so you get one person goes in there and they take up both spots. So we've, now you guys-
Time's up.
Okay, you guys, you guys said that you were going to do it, and yet you've still never done it.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else public comment? Please come on.
Thank you very much for this privilege. My name is Michael Saber. I'm a resident of Crescent City. I live on Pebble Beach. First of all, welcome Mr. Knight for, to our humble abode. I'm here to talk about the Brother Jonathan Point. I have got a very unique perspective of Brother Jonathan, because I live right above it, just like five properties north. And Brother Jonathan is caving in. It is really bad from my perspective. So I'll make this quick and sweet. There's three things that I wish would happen, and if I was in your position, I'm just talking as a citizen and just wanting to prevent litigation for the city, okay? Three things that I want. I would like the parking lot to be pushed back 15, at least 15 feet or some distance from the north side of Brother Jonathan Point. You need to have a plan to relocate that brick memorial there, because if you go there, it's already starting to lean. The third thing is, you need to make the safety area around the edge of Pebble Beach, around Brother Jonathan, much more secure. There is caution, there's poles in the ground, but there's just caution tape. And caution tape lasts like 20 minutes in this Delnart wind, okay? So you need to put some chains. I see tourists going over, over the, you know, the supposed secure line there. On the north side of the parking lot, where, this is my perspective, because I can see straight down, there is nothing underneath some of that grass there. So it, it is just something waiting to happen. And I just traveled through Brookings today, and I don't know whether you guys have, but all the way to the north side of 101, they're, they're digging, you know? So erosion happens, so I'm just trying to prevent some litigation for Crescent City. So please look at Brother Jonathan Point. I'm not one to take property away from the citizens and give it to the government, but there's a definite problem there that really needs to be looked at. It is serious, okay? Thank you very much for this honor.
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, I got to get by there. I've been there for a while. Is there any other public comment? Oh, please come on up.
My name's Calvin Clark. I don't live in the city, but I have friends that do, and they asked me to come and express some concerns over the increased sewer rates. Because they are on a fixed income, and a lot of people are in the city, and they're kind of concerned about the, the cost of living, which is pretty high. There's still some economy issues, you know, recovery. And I don't know, I don't know what to say other than, you know, I remember when my friends told me the time when Nikita Khrushchev took off his shoe and pounded it on the pulpit and said, "You will live under communism. We will feed you small doses of socialism, and we'll so weaken your economy that you'll fall like ripened fruit into our hands." And so I see a lot of people who don't have the means to pay all the fees, all the taxes on their private property, and they get into a situation. I asked many people in the community recently, "Tell me about the water sewer increase." They said, "Oh, it's a racket. I don't even care anymore." Those, you know, people mismanage funds, and negligence, and lack of disclosure. And others said, you know, "It's, it's very difficult to, to make ends meet." And so looking at it from a land use perspective and a historical perspective, as fees are increased, the lack of a person's control of their private, private property increases. And private property and delegation to a county and a city to help have honesty and integrity in government is, is what we all hope. When it comes to sewer and water and regulation, the International Council on Local Environmental Initiatives, ICLI, and its cohorts of the NGO status working under the United Nations have made so many restrictions on the use of private property that have been adopted by cities and counties across the United States. I hope that this county and this city, and this city is aware of these excess non-intru, non-law, soft law issues. And if there are some things that you can do to help resist the overregulation burden upon the citizens in this city, I highly recommend it. Am I out of three minutes?
Ten seconds.
Ten seconds? Okay. I just want to thank you for, for being here and, and for having pledged allegiance to a flag and to the republic, and the republic is an essential part of keeping America strong. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? All right, seeing no other public comment, we're going to close public comment with a bang. And we're going to go on to, we have no public hearings, we do have continuing business. Item number seven. We're going to receive a report from the city clerk on the received number of written protests and consider waive full reading, read by title only, and adopt ordinance number 792 of the City Council of the City of Crescent City, amending the city, oh, excuse me, the Crescent City Municipal Code Title 13 Public Services Chapter 13.30 Sewer Charges to Add Sections 13.30.020 through 13.30.023 Pertaining to Wastewater Service Charges. Take action if necessary and appropriate. Mr. Knight?
Thank you, Mayor Gassano. Council members, our city clerks here to give a presentation on this item, our staff report.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, as a point of order, we, we actually tabled this item. We need to have a motion to take it off the, off the table before we can proceed.
Good point of order. Is that correct?
I would have to check the minutes. I thought we continued it, but I could be wrong.
The minutes indicate that we, that we, that we tabled the item.
Okay.
So I would make a motion that we remove from the table the specific item from our previous meeting.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion, a second. You can go ahead. Just a consensus vote? Do we need to poll it?
No, we have to vote because there's, requires a majority vote.
All right.
You can voice vote.
All right.
You don't need to pull the vote.
Okay, so voice vote. Okay, we have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right, 5-0. Good?
We're good.
Thank you.
I don't know where to stand.
Right there. Ms. Scott?
All right, Mayor Gassano, members of the council. It's good to see you this evening. I will spare us all a rehash of everything. I think everybody is pretty familiar with the issue at this point, so I'm just going to pick up where we left off at the last meeting. And so at the last meeting, I'd rehash some of the numbers, I will go over those briefly. There were 3,429 parcels identified as being affected by the proposed sewer rate changes. Prop 218 legislation dictates that for a protest against making those changes, the city must receive 50 percent plus one valid protest. At the last meeting, I had received a total of 2,023 protests by the end of the public hearing. However, you can't tell simply by looking at a protest whether or not it is valid. There is a process to go through to ensure the validity. There's a number of things that are considered. The staff report lists many of those, but there are certain items of information that must be required on the protest. There's only one protest allowed for each parcel, so if there are multiple protests filed for one parcel, only one of those counts, and so on and so forth. So myself and two staff members, along with a public member, Donna Westfall, sat for the majority of four days, and I went through a process to validate those protests, at the end of which, we came out with 591 were invalid, leaving a total of 1,432 valid protests, which was short of the 1,715 needed. So therefore, the protest failed, and so that allows the council to act in whichever way you wish at this point. Do you have further questions, clarifications that you need of me?
Is there any questions from the council? Okay, I'm going to open this up to public comment. Please comment up. You have three minutes.
Can you clarify if someone's already spoke on this topic, if they're allowed to speak again?
I'll, I'll allow them to speak.
Okay.
Hello?
Your time has already started, Donna.
Pardon?
Your time has started.
Has started now?
Yeah.
Okay. To finish up, my last two paragraphs from before. Bottom line, you have a customer base that is getting smaller, you have a huge welfare society, you can't bring in any businesses because the workforce is substandard. For those of us still paying and paying on this insanity, we will deal with you through the courts and the ballot box. We may lose the battle like we did on this last protest, but we will win the war. And why? Because you're not listening, and we're persistent. My suggestion, do the right thing, start dealing with the real problems, bring these people in and do a thorough investigation, and you may discover that some or all of them are guilty of illegal acts and perhaps criminal acts. They have assets, they can pay restitution, they can have their assets forfeited, that would help reduce the loan balance down to a level we could afford. I predict you will find at least $15 million at stake. Now, I'm speaking as president of the Crescent City Delnart County Taxpayers Association. I'd like to speak about the notice and about the proposed ordinance, number 792. The increases are to be over four years at 5 percent per year, yet your ordinance states, whereas the city of Crescent City finds it necessary to implement sewer service rate increase each year for the next five years to stabilize and support the sewer fund. If you adopt this ordinance, we will demand another notice mailed out, another hearing, and another Prop 218 protest, because slipping in an extra year and 5 percent increase is called fraud against the public. About the numbers on the protest, we don't agree with Kimmy Scott's numbers. For example, number two and number three are blank. They shouldn't have been counted, should have been thrown out. The majority of those claimed to be not the owner of the ratepayer know this. Government Code Section 53755 was passed in 2007 with an effective date of January 2008. It's been a law for eight years. One written protest per parcel filed by an owner or tenant of the parcel shall be counted in calculating a majority protest. They do not have to directly pay the bill, and the burden of proof is on the city. What part of this do you not understand? So the 90 claimed to be disqualified is not the ratepayer, the owner. We dispute, and that affects the overall count.
Can you sum up?
I think that's enough.
All right, thank you very much. Anybody else public comment on this issue?
Thank you, council. To clarify, could you please tell me if that was per parcel or per bill that your protest calculation was based on?
I'm not sure of the question that you're asking. Which number are you-
For instance, multi-units have multiple bills that each individual will pay.
The legislation is per parcel.
The legislation is per parcel, but yet that doesn't represent the constituents who each pay a bill and will be affected by a rate increase. Isn't that right?
So this is the way that the law is laid out, and so every ratepayer can file a protest, but only one counts per parcel.
I see. So the question is, then, to the council, is that really representation, or is that gerrymandering?
It's what the, the law states that we have to go by.
Okay. So it doesn't represent your base of voters and your constituents. So that's my concern. And I, I highly recommend you table this, do some investigation, publish, perhaps put together a citizens and official from the council to discuss, sit down and discuss all of the details of where- all of the details of where the grand jury should look, and perhaps send them some resourceful information.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Okay, seeing no other public comment, I'm going to bring this back to the council. Is there any further discussion by the council?
I just, the last speaker, usually we don't respond, but I think it's important for the public to know that we have no jurisdiction or way to change the laws of Prop 218 at this level. It has to go before the state legislative body, and that we, correct?
Prop 218 is a constitutional amendment brought forward by the people of the state of California.
So, they voted for it, not us, and so, but if there were an amendment to it, it would have to go either to a vote to the people or to the legislation, our legislative body, right?
Right, well, the legislature can't change the language of Prop 218 itself.
It'd have to go back to the people.
Correct.
Of the whole state. So, we have no jurisdiction and no say. That's how the law was enacted is through the people. So, we, it's not by any sense in our control. Correct?
Correct.
Okay.
All right, any other discussion with council?
I guess, again, as councilmember Murray stated, our practice is not to engage in specific dialogue with the public. On the other hand, I think when we're presented with information that we need to look at, we do need to address it, and from a staff standpoint, looking at the ordinance, I would like clarification on the specific verbiage regarding five years. In, when we looked at the Will Down presentation, the 5% increases specifically were to begin after the first year, I believe, is the interpretation in the ordinance that the five-year here represents the fact that there in fact will be an increase for certain ratepayers because of the change in structure? Or is the, does this ordinance, in essence, give the possibility that we will see a 5% increase in each of the next five years? Because that is not what my understanding was, and I do think that we need clarification on that.
I can answer that. The whereas clause at the beginning of the ordinance, that should, the five should be a four. That's a typo. So, the rates that are set forth are for each of the next four fiscal years.
Okay, then I have a follow-up. Was that typo presented when we had our first reading, and none of us catch it? If so, then what we, then what we are approving tonight would be different than what we approved before, and I'm sorry, we have got way too much invested in this and too much going on to not cross every T and dot every I. If that is a typo that none of us caught with the first reading, then it is my feeling then that that first reading is not, cannot be matched by this reading now. I mean, you're the, you're our legal expert, but I'm very concerned about whatever our first reading was, that we, that it can't be a second reading of something different. That's just a layman's perspective, but so I need some help.
Right, so, you're not allowed to make, if you make substantive changes to an ordinance after the first reading, you have to reintroduce it. If you are correcting things like spelling errors and typographical errors that did not change the substance of the ordinance, then you do not need to reintroduce it. I believe the whereas clause that has the five, that was a carryover and was never corrected, the substance of the ordinance that begins with the Crescent City Municipal Code amendments only reflects changes for the next four fiscal years. And that is what the ratepayers and parcel owners were all notified of. So, they've all been given proper notice of the changes that are set forth in this ordinance. That five is a typo it should read for.
Okay, I'm, and I appreciate that, Ms. Rice. I'm trying to find in the ordinance what you were just referring to, where it states the four-year component. Uh-huh. Thank you.
It's the last whereas.
Yeah, well, no, I can see that.
Okay. And I do want to point out that this, we changed our fees from a flat rate to a consumption base, so not all the customers are being, will have, see an increase initially, correct?
Correct. The overall revenue to the city will increase each year, but not necessarily every individual ratepayer's bill.
Right, and we had that in our presentations when this, when this whole process began. So, not all consumers will be seeing a rate increase initially.
This first year, that is true.
Yeah.
Any other comments?
I'll go ahead.
Ms. Rice, then, it's your opinion that the five-year, that the typo that apparently occurred between four and five years is not substantive and doesn't really require us to have at least a first reading again?
No, I don't think it is substantive. It's a typo in the whereas clauses, which are not, you know, sort of set the stage. They're recitals. They're not the substantive part of the ordinance, which begins with Section 1. Amendment sets rates beginning July 1, 2016. It goes on for 2017, 2018, and 2019, then that's the end. If it went out five years, it would include year 2020.
Right, thank you.
I'd just like to share a little anecdote, as where, when I attended the Randwood Empire Division meeting on February 24th, and, actually, it was the 25th, I guess, in Willets, I learned that Rio Del had just gone through the Prop 218 process for their water rates, and they struggled with the same issue, that they know their citizens have fixed incomes, that it's a difficult decision for the council to have to ask of their citizens, but they were going to be financially bankrupt if they didn't do it, and it would destroy their water system if they didn't. So, they moved forward, and this came from councilmember Gordon Johnson, who also is part of our Last Chance Stakeholders Group, and I've known him for a while now. And he said that it was really a difficult process, but in the end, that the citizens pulled through, and the, that they voted and their rate increase went through and saved the water system. And so, it's a difficult decision that we all have to pull together, and it's called burden sharing, but it's something that we need to do in order to keep our critical infrastructure and our public utilities going. So, I just wanted to share that because a lot of cities in the state struggle with this decision for their public utilities, and it, but it's because of Prop 218, you get to have a voice, and this is how it works. It doesn't, it's not a perfect system, but this is what we need to do, and we, we're trying to keep our public utilities healthy and working properly. So, this is, this is the way it works.
All right, Mr. Chart?
I just wanted to say that I observed the validation process. I wanted to thank Ms. Scott, these two other staff members that were there, sitting under a video camera for four days, and they explained to me the process after, you know, hearing some rumors of, you know, invalidating, you know, protest letters for various reasons. I wanted to go down there and see it myself, and I'm thoroughly convinced they did a great job and kept everything above board. Those are, that's all I got.
I just have a few comments. Some of it's historic, historical, I should say, and you've heard some of them before, but as we approach this important vote, I think it's incumbent on me to at least talk a little bit more about the process, because I do not discount the 1,500 or so signatures that don't want to pay additional sewer fees. I really do not discount that. But with that in mind, I want to say and remind everybody that about 15 months ago, when I was outgoing mayor, I accompanied staff to Sacramento to appeal the interest rates on our sewer loan. In an historic decision, the Water Resources Board of the state approved the reduction, saving ratepayers almost $15 million over the course of the loan. If this had not occurred, our rates, hang on to your hats, folks, would have been as much as $232 a month per parcel. So, staff and knowing this kind of increase would have been impossibly burdensome to all of our users. The state and city staff worked tirelessly over a period, I think, of about nine months for an alternative to achieve debt relief that would enable us to move forward with its sewage treatment plant and its stability. On that day in Sacramento, despite the fact that I, that we did, I thought a very excellent thing for the, for the ratepayers of this community, we knew that there was more work to be done. We admit that this was a very expensive, and it is a very expensive and critical plant, and in order for it to remain efficient and functional, that more additional income was need, was going to need to be found. We knew that even though this was going on, there was a small structural deficit in that we have about $100,000 a year, I think, each year that has to be ratcheted up just to meet our obligation, even with the 0% interest with the state. And actually, the increase that we're asking for only nets us about $100,000, as I remember, as I looked at the numbers. So, we must remain a plant because failure to do so would ultimately result in huge costs in the future. At the time that we were in Sacramento, we were talking to engineers, and they said, and this was, again, about a year and a half ago, they said if you did a similar bill today, it would have been, I believe they said it would have been about $75 million. Yes, it cost us, whatever it was, 43 million, but they said if we did it in today's cost, it would be 73. If we don't maintain this plant, it's clearly, if we have to rebuild a new plant because of a lack of maintenance, for example, it's going to be, it's going to cost us twice what this last one cost, and we can't afford to do that. The, the thing, well, let me just say that when I ran for office, I promised not to kick the can down the road. That's part of how we found ourselves in a position where we had to have this, this big rebuild of the plant, is because other city councils did not do the affirmative action that needed to happen to keep the plant current and to keep it efficient. So, we cannot afford to burden our children and our grandchildren with a plant that's improperly maintained. It's short-sighted, and we owe it to the community, I think, to see that this, this plant remains a good plant, an efficient plant, as far into the future as we can possibly get it to go. So, for those reasons, I just want you to know that we worked on keeping the costs down as much as we could, and I think we were pretty successful in doing that, considering where we started. But I don't see how, if we're going to be responsible, we can do anything but vote for this rate increase.
Thank you. I just have a couple of, a couple of things that I guess, first of all, I want to address the typo in the ordinance. I guess I would just say to our public, I apologize, I should catch that. That's part of my job, and I didn't. It may not be substantive, but it's important. And so, from my standpoint, as a person who represents this community, I take absolute responsibility because it's a question that is well addressed and well taken, and whether we address that any further, I will certainly honor our attorney's opinion that it may not be substantive, but I can guarantee you this. I pride myself on being a good study of everything. Staff will tell you that because I drive them nuts with all my questions, so I apologize for that. And I would admonish staff and our attorney. We need to pay attention. We absolutely have to pay attention. We need to catch this. If we knew that this typo was here, it should have been upfront, and we should have been instructed about it even before we talked about it. I shouldn't have to hear from the public that I'm missing something. Our staff, our attorney, everybody should come to me, us, and say, hey, we missed something. You need to be aware of this, because when we don't, it appears as if we're trying to slip something through, and we can't afford that in this community. We can't afford that about something that's as contentious as this is. So, that said, I'll take responsibility for the fact that I missed this. I apologize to our community for that. Secondly, we may have in fact needed to build a Pinto, and we built a Lexus. Okay, maybe. Car reference. Here's the problem. If you put out an order to build your new car, and you can only afford a Pinto, and you get that, that's one thing. If you decide that you really wanted that Lexus and you can't afford it, and you can't pay for it, they can repossess that car. It's very difficult to repossess infrastructure. So, we're in a quandary. We're in a big quandary. Here's what I believe to be true. The plan that is before us takes into account what it will, what it will take financially for us to pay the bill that we have and maintain the plant that we have. I believe that the numbers that we have been presented with accurately reflect what it's going to take to pay the debt service and maintain the plant. I think that part is accurate. Whether or not we should have got this plant and whether or not we should have borrowed the money is a separate issue, and it may be an issue that, that people take issue with and choose to address in other means down the road. I respect that. I truly do. But, sitting on this side of this wall, I have a responsibility to say, we have a debt that is ours. It is attached to the City of Crescent City. We have to pay that now, right or wrong, from the standpoint of whether or not we should have incurred it, we're responsible. We can't say to the State Water Resource Board, you know, we don't really want that MBR. Why don't you come and get it? I wish we could. That'd be, that'd be, shoot, I could get reelected on that. It's just not possible. So, we've got to deal with what we have and be responsible with, fiscally with what we have. I read today the grand jury report, and we can, we can find fault with the grand jury. We saw that happen again this year with people who found fault with the grand jury, but we do have a process, a public process, to try to vet these problems, and it was addressed in 2008 and 2009, and many of the, the things that are brought up tonight by public comment were addressed in the grand jury report. Matter of fact, almost every one of them that I have heard was addressed then. Was the grand jury report accurate or inaccurate? How can I address that? We saw that play out this year with the grand jury report. It becomes this he-said, she-said thing, but we have to work with the processes that we have. Do I like all the processes? Shoot, I don't even like this new airport formation commission thing that we have to have now. We don't need more commissions and government and regulations and rules. I get that, and I'm not for that, but I am for taking responsibility of debt. Right or wrong, this is our debt, and it is our plant. We have to maintain it, and we have to pay for it. Frankly, all of this really is unfortunate that we're in this situation, but we've got to address the reality got to address the reality of dealing with the current situation that we're in, and if there's going to be traction or movement from the standpoint of addressing, again, the issue of whether or not there is graft and corruption or any of those things, then that again will have to be something the grand jury can take up, or a citizens group can look at this from a different perspective, but it doesn't change the fact that we have the responsibility to be fiscally responsible with what we have, debt and our infrastructure. That's what we're trying, that's what I'm trying to do. I take responsibility for that. I take responsibility for the fact that we incurred this debt long before I was on this council, but I inherited that, and I have to figure out a way to pay for it. The fact is, had we continued down a course of action that we were on a year ago, when I first came on the council, nobody in this community would have had any break whatsoever, because we weren't even considering consumption base. I didn't even know what that was called. We weren't even talking about that. But we brought that back to the table, we went back to asking, can we do this? And at the very least, we have tried to be sensitive to a certain segment of our society, of our community, that may in fact fall into that 50%, who will see a decrease. I'd like to say that that's at least a positive thing for some of our people. Is it going to be a negative for others? Yes. And the rate structure is built in the fact that some people are going to realize, I can lower my rate by using less water. But that was built into the structure to anticipate a 10% reduction of our public saying, hey, I want my rate to go down too. I guess all I'm trying to say is, yeah, this is a difficult, difficult situation, but we do have the responsibility to pay our debts and to take care of our infrastructure. And we can't, we can't just simply, I came from a community that got himself way upside down. I came from Stockton, which is the poster child for how to destroy a city and go bankrupt. Unfortunately, and this is a really bad thing to say, unfortunately, we're solvent in all the rest of our funds, we're doing fine. Our city is managing the rest of its resources very well. We're seeing things come together, and we're doing exceptionally well, credit that to staff, I don't take much credit up here for that. But the fact is, you can't file for bankruptcy when you're doing well in every other area. I mean, it's a real quandary, it really is. But I've spoke long enough, I just feel very strongly that we have to take responsibility for what we have, both debt and infrastructure, and nobody has presented, at least to me, any other proposal that we can do both of those things, other than this. And I've asked a lot of questions. I just don't know of any other way to do that. So that's my take. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And segueing off of what Mr. Inscore said, it is definitely in infrastructure. I mean, we have roads, parks, sidewalks, sewer pipes, all this costs money to maintain, and if we don't spend the money to actually maintain it, it's going to cost us more in the future to get it done right and fix it. And also, who wants to like drive on crappy roads, walk down sidewalks that are broken, or worry about, you know, our parks not being maintained? All this stuff is in our budget, we take a lot of this into account. As you've heard, we have studies, we have people working on this, we don't take anything lightly on that. Now, if we don't continue to maintain our infrastructure, we aren't going to see any growth in our city, we're not going to see any new jobs, we're not going to see any new businesses come in. Nobody wants to come into a city that has crappy infrastructure. So if we don't continue, and this is part of our infrastructure, is to be able to provide clean water and to take away people's sewage, we are going to die as a city. So one of the things we have to do is we have to maintain our assets. So, and, you know, some of these assets, like our sewer plant, it's mandated for the changes that we have in there, that we have to include into its building. We don't have a choice on that. Our sewer goes out into the ocean. We have higher standards in most cities, because we are on the coast. So when that, those mandates come down, we have to take them into account when we have to do the same. So building our Lexus, maybe it's more of a minivan, because we've got to take everybody with us. Not that we're going for the highest-priced sewer, we are trying to do the right thing for our city and the environment that is mandated from the state. So on that, I, after our great discussion here, would entertain a motion.
I will make a motion to waive the full reading and adopt ordinance number 792 of the city Crescent City Council, amending the Crescent City Municipal Code Title 13, Public Services Chapter 13.30, Sewer Charges to Add Sections 3.30.020 through 13.30.023 Pertaining to Wastewater Service Charges.
You have a second?
I move that we make that change, changing under the fourth whereas in the ordinance, from five years to four years. And with that change, I'll second that motion.
I'll add that amendment to my first, to my motion, and thank you.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second with that change to, for the five years to be changed to four under the whereas on the resolution, to make it more clear. Please pull the vote.
Councilmember Hawley?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Councilmember Short?
Yes.
Mayor Gastineau?
Yes, that passes unanimously. Thank you very much. On to item number eight, consider approve and authorize the city manager to sign a funding allocation agreement with the Del Norte Local Transportation Commission, take action as necessary to appropriate. Mr. Knight.
So thank you again, Mayor Gastideau, council members, I'm going to ask our public work structure to come up and provide a staff report.
Thank you. Mr. Weir.
All right, thank you, Mayor Gastineau, members of the council. So yes, what's before you on this item is to authorize the city manager to sign a funding allocation agreement with the local Del Norte Transportation Commission. This agreement is designed to comply with the state requirements that the Del Norte Local Transportation Commission enter into contracts with its member agencies for reimbursement of regional surface transportation program funds. This agreement also covers all sources of discretionary funding that passes through the local transportation commission. So for the city, and I'll try to bring up the attachment. I can't, I can't see it from that far away.
Which one is it?
It should be the attachment A for U or G.
Right above the F.
Right above the F. Right here, huh?
There you go.
All right. All right, so this is the attachment that is part of this agreement, so you can see that this includes all of the projects that are currently funded through the Del Norte Transportation Commission that the city has funds to. So you see the first one up is the Front Street, that is the $400,000 that was allocated to represent a matching funds for the Front Street grant that was allocated in 2012. And then you have some recently allocated funds in regard to the city pedestrian, community outreach, education funds for the sidewalks and pedestrian type of cleanup type efforts. You have the school striping, which is allocated through two different funding sources, that's TDA as well as RSTP totaling $45,000. And then you have the Sunset Circle ATP match in the amount of $160,000. These are recently acquired funds or allocated funds and have a sunset date in 2018. The Front Street you see is the one nuanced, this is to be determined. Front Street, like you said, was allocated originally in 2012 as part of that design project. We have gone after multiple grants for Front Street, we have not been successful yet. So in discussion with Tamara Layton, the executive director for the Local Transportation Commission, we have been discussing this item. Ms. Layton is here tonight and can answer any technical questions that you might have for her in regard to this. But Front Street, over time, through the design process, has changed. The original thought was that the $400,000 could represent maybe as much as a 10% match. We now know that through the pedestrian improvements, through that design, and everything that that project entails with water, storm drain, roundabout, that's not the case. The project is now estimated to be about $12 million, so it doesn't really represent a 10% match anymore, nor do we have a grant that would even utilize this funding source. So what she has informed me of, and we have discussed, is that this item, although it's part of this attachment today, that's before you tonight, could go before the Transportation Commission to be rescinded. Now, that doesn't mean that the Transportation Commission doesn't support Front Street, or that Tamara doesn't support Front Street, like we all support Front Street, it's just that this money to be actually allocated to a project that we don't have a grant for now, it makes more sense to go ahead and have this money be part of the RSTP fund balance, and then if we get a grant for Front Street, we could utilize this money, and not in the amount of $400,000, but for whatever the grant amount, their matching amount that we might need would be, as long as that fund balance would have that. Or if, say, there's another regional transportation priority project that could utilize these funds, it could be used for that, as the grant arena currently really isn't set up for a project like Front Street. It's more set up for any sort of project that might meet that particular grant criteria. For example, the Front Street project that we've tried to go after grants for is ATP, Active Transportation, so there's pots of money for that. So what we've done is tried to break Front Street up into those different components, so they might be eligible for those type of grants, because that's what's out there, it's project-specific type of funding. So there might be another project that's regional priority to us that could receive grant funding, and then we could use this RSTP money for that. But that is, that's what is before the council line, is to approve this agreement that's really required by state mandate. So any questions the council has for myself or Ms. Layton?
So basically, we're taking that $400,000 that's just sitting there burning a hole in our pocket, sending it back to the Transportation Commission, so they can use it on other projects around our region, is that correct? Possibly.
It's still, it currently still resides within the Transportation, it's just been allocated to the Front Street project, of which we currently don't have a grant for, so it would go back into the fund balance. If we did receive a grant for Front Street, we could ask for whatever that matching would be, whether it be $400,000 or possibly more, as long as it's within the balance, but it would be unrestricted. Currently, right now, it's restricted.
All right, I understand.
So it's restricted to Front Street in general? So if we came back with a parsed-out plan to do Front Street in sections or components, is there any reason why we could not draw upon that money if we got funds to do a portion of Front Street?
Yes, currently, right now, it is slated for Front Street, it's not slated to necessarily do the whole part of Front Street, it would be something that we would have to approach the Transportation Commission on as we receive that grant, but it would be, at least it's my impression, and Ms. Layton could maybe shed some more light on it, that yes, that as long as it's being used towards Front Street, that money could be used.
I guess my other question, I guess this would be for Ms. Layton, is, and I realize we represent, we're represented on the Transportation Commission, the council is, my concern is, once that money is removed from a specific allocation of something that's obviously such a hot topic for our community, what's the likelihood of that money being reallocated into the future? I mean, I'm not advocating just simply tying up money, it's been tied up for four years, but I guess, I don't know how, I don't even know if you can even answer that.
I'm Tamara Layton, the executive director of the Del Norte Local Transportation Commission. And regarding Front Street, as you know, you can see in the chart, the funds were awarded over three years ago, our new requirements are that we have to have this funding agreement. This chart represents and can be amended as needed, so when there's a new allocation to the city, we don't have to amend the whole agreement, we just amend this Exhibit A. So this Exhibit A will be amended over time as new projects come and go. Regarding the future of Front Street, we don't know the future of Front Street, the Front Street project that received this 10% match was a very different project than the project that we're talking about now. So in, by respecting our regional transportation obligation, we're not for the city, for the county, for the tribes, for the harbor, for the anybody, we have to set priorities regionally and make the money work the best that we can to meet regional needs. This is a large amount of money for RSTP funds to be set aside. It was a very difficult decision three years ago to set this money aside for Front Street. We did it because the Front Street is such a high priority. Front Street remains a high priority for our whole region. Nobody disagrees with the priority of Front Street, and a draft regional transportation plan does not downgrade the importance of Front Street, and we're moving through that process now. I anticipate that the Transportation Commission would support Front Street to the greatest extent possible, but keeping in mind that we do have regional obligations and we are required to meet regional needs, and so there's no guarantee of anything in the future. I can certainly agree with Mr. Weir that the funding that crisis that transportation has today, we have a negative $750 million debt balance, it's unheard of in transportation. I do think that solutions are forthcoming, I think that it's gotten so bad that something's going to happen and it's going to get better. I have no idea what that is. You know, there are opportunities through the Federal FAST Act, there are, things are going to have to change in the state, and I believe that that is going to happen, because things have gotten so bad that something will have to shake loose. But, you know, I can't predict the future of Front Street. If we had something on the horizon, if we had something that was just around the corner, we don't have those kinds of things for Front Street right now, so I believe that it's a better use of our taxpayer dollars to put that money back, to use it in the best way possible, we're all keeping an eye on Front Street. Nobody's, you know, downgrading the importance of that.
I guess a follow-up question, and I appreciate all of that, and it makes perfect sense to me. I guess my question then would be, and not being familiar with doing these allocation agreements, is if that's the direction that really we need to go for the basis of the community as a whole, for allocating, using these funds for things that actually are right around the corner, why is it even in the allocation agreement?
Yeah, I can answer that. I actually preferred to pull it from the allocation agreement, but Eric was absolutely, excuse me, Mr. Weir, sorry, was absolutely right in his request to put it in, because it is current, we have a current resolution. I believe that that resolution needs to be rescinded, the money needs to go back to the pot, this Exhibit A needs to be corrected, but that's not the state of things right now, so the spreadsheet needed to reflect where we are right now.
So will we have an amended agreement then after that happens?
We'll have an amended Exhibit A.
Okay.
The agreement will stay the same. The agreement is common language that the county has signed, that the tribes have signed, that lots of folks have already signed.
Okay, good, thank you, that's good, it's just good to know.
Ms. Layton, so we free up the $400,000, and something happens, the grant comes available, and we spend it. I just, I don't know, I guess I had trouble.
I just, I don't know, I guess I had trouble taking away money from a Front Street project that everybody's so hot upon and risking losing that allocation that we've set aside.
Well, there is no Front Street project right now. There are Front Street plans right now. If there was a Front Street project, but we actually don't have a project right now, we don't even have anything on the horizon for Front Street that we can figure out. There isn't a month that doesn't go by that Mr. Ware and I don't talk about Front Street and how to solve it.
I understand that we have the master plan, the roundabout twelve million dollar project that's coming up. I wonder if we're buying a Lexus when we should be buying a Pinto.
Great question.
I don't know, I just, I'm a bit apprehensive.
Well, you know, I understand that from a city council perspective. The Transportation Commission perspective and their obligation is to be regional. You know, I hope, and I've seen it with the county supervisors from local tribes, everybody has supported Front Street in the past, and I think that the public works and planning members of different organizations were very supportive in Front Street in agreeing to this four hundred thousand dollar allocation. Everybody agreed to this a few years ago, but I don't believe it makes sense at this time.
I guess we could also tell people, where'd the four hundred thousand dollars come from?
The four hundred thousand dollars is Regional Surface Transportation Program money, and it comes through the federal, from the federal government through the state, becomes state funds for us rural transportation planning agencies, so we don't have to do federal reporting. And so this is state taxpayer federal dollars.
And I can say that it makes perfectly clear sense to me, having sat on the Local Transportation Commission since I've been elected, so I understand why we need to do this. It doesn't feel as uncomfortable as it would for the more newly-elected that haven't really had the experience of being also on the transportation. I can understand why it feels uncomfortable, but it makes perfectly clear, clean sense to me that we need to do this, because we do not have any projects on the horizon. We do have a master plan. I don't believe that it is the Rolls Royce master plan. I think it's a good plan, a good solid plan, and if we do it by piece, you know, one section at a time, we will get it done. We know that it's much more complicated than just resurfacing, which is, what a lot of community members want us to do, but it would be a bad investment of tax dollars to do it that way. It would be a Band-Aid on, you know, a project, and it would be throwing away money, really, to just resurface. So we need to do it right when we do it, so that's why we're doing, we're taking our time. We did, I can't remember what it's called technically, we did some kind of resurfacing, Eric, if you can help me out, I can't remember what it's called.
It was called a rejuvenation seal.
Rejuvenation seal.
That we did, just to try to preserve the payment life as much as we could without really investing high dollars. In fact, it was very low dollars.
It was very low dollars. It was a good bang for the buck, as it were, but that was the best we could do. But we need to do it right, because there's so much, there's so many complications underneath the surface of the road itself that we need to do it right. So that's why we're looking for those grants that will help us enable it to do it properly, and it won't, because it's caving in, and that's why there's so many potholes and whatnot, correct?
That is, that is correct.
Okay.
Yeah, the structural section of Front Street is not to the point that you should just put an overlay over that street. You need to go down and you need to fix your structural section. There's also other components to Front Street. There's the component, and I believe it's in this PowerPoint slide, this is.
I know you did a really good opinion piece back, a while back, in the local paper, the Daily Tripplicate, so.
Several components. It's sewer, there's water, there's storm drain, you know, so there's infrastructure that we really should redo before we go and do just an overlay, redo the street. There's also the pedestrian improvement side of things, as well as then the street transportation side.
Right. So this RSTP funding, us holding on to it, really is doing the region no good. So we really should give it back, and then we can, we can still work on trying to find grants, and then go back to the Local Transportation Commission and see what money we can get from them, what kind of help we can get from them.
Exactly. And I have no doubt that if we found a grant that fit any one of these pieces, we could go back to the Local Transportation Commission and ask for funding of a match for a regional priority project that Front Street has been established to be. As far as the components, you know, we are continually looking for funding for each of those components. One component, when we first started this project, was to redo the sewer line in B Street, major component. It was a clay sewer line, obviously, that we're redoing right now, so we found funding for that component. So that's one less piece that now we have to try to complete. So there is pieces that are starting to fall off this, and we're continuing to look for funding.
Thank you. Thanks, Eric. Thank you, Ms. Layton.
Okay. So we have to vote on this. Is there any public comment on this? All right, seeing no public comment, let's bring it back to the council.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve and authorize the city manager to sign a funding allocation agreement with the Delano Local Transportation Commission.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Could you please pull the vote?
Councilmember Hawley?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Councilmember Short?
Yes.
Pro-Tim Inscore?
Yes.
Mayor Gastineau?
Yes, thank you, and that passes unanimously. Okay, we are on to new business, item number nine. Excuse me. Consider and provide comment on proposed council policy and procedure manual. Mr. Knight?
Thank you, Mayor Gastineau, councilmembers. I want to ask for our city clerk to provide you with some input on this, but before I let her start talking, I want to thank her for taking this extra project on and keeping an eye on your strategic plan assessment.
Great, thank you. Ms. Scott?
Hello, Mayor and council. So what I've presented to you is just a rough draft copy. Basically, as I've been reviewing our records and our history and trying to be the best resource for you that I can be, it gets pretty complicated when you start looking back, different policies and resolutions and ordinances over the years, make this mumbo jumbo of what it is that you should do, as far as, you know, when to have council meetings and how to elect the mayor each year, and, you know, maybe best practices as far as where to go for information, how to interact with staff, and this is not the first time that this problem has been encountered. Obviously, many cities go through this, and many cities have solved that issue by creating a policy and procedure manual. So I started taking a look around at a few other cities to see what they had done to solve that issue, and some have a very brief manual, some have an extremely lengthy manual, and I found a couple that seemed suited well for us. So I sort of modeled those and went through all the information that I could find that has been passed to help guide us in what we do, and compiled that, and then also input, you know, a few places where I think that maybe we could improve on what we are doing, or maybe there needs to be some clarification. So by no means, what I place in front of you is not meant to be a final copy, but I just asked that you would take a look at it and provide some comment, maybe some discussion here with each other, and provide some comment back to me, so that we can try to come up with a useful document, not only to help the council and to help the staff, but also to help the public understand what it is that everyone does and how they interact, and as well as anybody who may be aspiring to be on the council, if they're confused by that. Also, received feedback from a couple of the directors that they had wished that something like this had existed when they came on, because when you jump into this sort of role, it can be very confusing. So with that, I welcome any comments and discussion.
Oh, I'm gonna, excuse me, start off, it's like, I teach high school kids and the mayor, and so they always ask, what does the mayor do? It's like, okay, what do I do? And this here is really good. From the, you know, three and a half years that I've been on the council, most of the stuff you learn on the go, on the job, and here it is, all in this nice concisely in this manual here, that, you know, to understand what you're doing. And Mr. Short and Mr. Inscore, I mean, Inscore's been here for a while, but Mr. Short, you got the manual here, finally, you can see what's going on, what's happening. And, you know, there's just a few things in there, like, only thing I noticed, everything else is great, and it's just that the order of the meetings inside the manual is different than we actually practiced, so, but that was just it. But otherwise, great job. I do wish I had this, and anybody considering running for city council, definitely, this will be on our website or with the packet that we give the candidates, yes?
I'm sure it could be, if we can get it approved in time for that.
Sure. Well, yeah, we do give packets to candidates so they understand what's going on in the city council, so they don't come in all bright-eyed, bushy-tailed with no information, and then get beaten down by the system. No, that doesn't happen. So, yes, very, very good. Any other comments from the council?
As your freshman council member, I appreciate this very much. It was very useful. Doing a little more, you know, tweaking, little additions here and there over the next couple of weeks will be, will yield a great product. Thank you for all your work.
I think that was my question, too, is about the tweaking. What are next steps? There were a lot of questions asked within the policy, and how do you want those questions answered, how we want to treat certain items? Just a few typos.
Yeah, my thought would be, and Mr. Knight could, you know, steer me different if he feels otherwise, but like, Councilmember Murray already provided me with a few different thoughts, and so if each of you could just provide me with, you know, typos, clarifications, questions, thoughts that you think we could do better, what I would like to do is then take that and summarize it, you know, anything that's as simple as a typo, obviously, I could just go in and fix. If there's things that I see where maybe there's some differing viewpoints, we could bring that back and have that, you know, escalated a little better for some discussion, maybe some discussion points around that, but I just kind of wanted to use this as a starting point to get this rolling.
That's a great, it's great to have it all in one spot.
Thanks.
So, thank you.
What do you, what would be your thought with, if you get feedback from all of us, and the feedback that you get is contrary? How do we proceed forward, you know, as opposed to having just dialogue now about ideas that we have, if the mayor says that, well, I think it should be this order, and the mayor pro-Tim says, well, no, it should be a different order? What do we, I don't want to put an undue burden on you of trying to figure out, okay, which one of these people are going to take me off their Christmas card if I don't take their suggestion.
Yeah, I'm certainly not going to pick for you. So my thought is, for most things, it probably won't be controversial topics. There may be a couple of things that need further discussion, so I would just bring back a second version that highlights, you know, there are conflicting views on the order. Here's the options that were presented to me, and that way you guys can then, you know, figure it out here.
All right. Thank you. Then I won't give you my, I'll give you my list. I won't read it.
And I just want to, again, commend you in public, I did over in my emails, but what a great job you did, and I'm really, really pleased and impressed and thrilled that you've done this. Thank you for all your hard work. It's really a great product, and will be most helpful to the council and potential council members in the community and our team. So thank you so much. Great job.
Thanks.
I did notice that, that when we choose the new mayor, we can't take over till the next meeting.
The next meeting? Yeah, I saw that.
Yeah, right now, our tradition is like, okay, here you go.
Here's the chair.
In this case, I think that's a good idea.
Yeah. Maybe two meetings or so.
No gift basket for you.
Okay, so there's no vote on this. Thank you for your report, so there's no public comment on this, but is there going to be, are we going to have this up for any public review?
I guess that would be up to you folks.
Okay, we'll wait till we get it a little more refined, and then we'll throw it up. On the website, come on. Okay, so that was item number nine. We're on to item number 10. Consider for authorization contingent upon the review and approval of the city attorney, the city manager to sign an agreement with Coleman Engineering Incorporated for engineering services and required environmental documents as part of the final United States Department Agricultural USDA Rural Development Application for the 2015 Water System Improvements Project in the not-to-exceed amount of one hundred nineteen thousand, four hundred thirty-seven dollars. Take action as necessary and appropriate. Mr. Knight?
Well, thank you very much again, Mayor and councilmembers. So this is certainly an awkward position for your staff. We certainly believe that we take direction very well and carry it out as we get paid to do. And the city council did provide us very clear direction at the February 16th city council meeting, and that was after much deliberation. The council elected not to take action on the staff recommendation, which was authorize the city manager to execute an agreement with the number-one-ranked firm through the process of Coleman Engineering, for the engineering services and environmental documents for this USDA Rural Development Project. Instead, the council directed staff to negotiate an agreement with Kennedy Jeng's consultants. It appeared to staff, in listening to the deliberation, that council's heart was in the right place, as council chose to award the contract to a firm capable of performing the work. That included a local subcontractor to keep at least that portion of the work here locally. So before staff started to carry out that direction and enter into those negotiations as council directed, we did receive a letter dated February 18th from Coleman Engineering, addressed to Mayor Gastineau, and an email of that letter was mailed, was sent to all of the council members. That particular letter is not included in your agenda packet, but all of you did receive it. The letter referenced a number of concerns, but to me, anyway, in my reading of it, the main focus was regarding the potential violation of USDA federal procurement requirements, which the city is bound to when using USDA funding. So staff reviewed the letter with our city attorney and determined some issues raised in the Coleman letter may have merit, and again, I'm going back to the local preference discussion. We followed up that. Actually, we were contacted by Quinn Donovan at USDA. We exchanged some voicemails, and then the Public Works Director and myself, and in the first conversation, the city attorney was present. So we did call Quinn Donovan back and spoke with him, and he's our area specialist that's working very closely with Eric on the project. In that discussion, Mr. Quinn referenced a number of key sections to us. One was federal, one states that the federal procurement requirements, among other things, require that procurement procedures not restrict or eliminate competition. And then he also pointed us to a 2012 USDA memo that was sent to all of the state directors, and I think the spirit of the memo was to clarify or interpret some of the provisions and the procurement requirements. And one important directive that he pointed us to in the federal procurement procedures was a statement that said that procedures shall not prohibit the use of state, I mean, shall prohibit the use of state or local geographic preferences as a selection criteria. So with that, based on the Coleman letter, and in as much our conversations with our proposed funder USDA, staff determined that the USD funding for Phase One of the project, which actually would be a reimbursement, for Phase One of the project, which is the preliminary engineering and environmental work, may be at jeopardy if the project is awarded to Kennedy Jengs due to the, what was perceived as the local preference for that, driving that reason. So based on that potential loss of funding, staff is bringing this item back to the council with a recommendation, as you already stated, authorize the city manager to execute an agreement with Coleman Engineering, Inc., for preliminary engineering and environmental services for the 2015. environmental services for the 2015 water system improvement project in an amount not to exceed $119,437. So, that's, that's kind of a summary of the longer recommendation you have up there. I will say that I did follow up and spoke with a number of the screening committee. As you know, there were five members on the interview panel, and a pretty, pretty good panel with varied expertise. It seemed to me like, in those conversations, it was clear that in the interview process that Coleman Engineering really rose to the top for many reasons, including, you know, the size of their company, their ability to perform the work, and probably most important, their approach to the project and the team that they were providing to the project. So, that's why they rose up to the top, and I think there are similar reasons why Kennedy Jenks did not. So, Chad Coleman, the president of Coleman Engineering, is in attendance to support this conversation, so I don't know if the mayor would want to have him come up and speak as a part of this, or, we didn't really talk about that, but he did make the trip up.
Mr. Coleman, want to come up? Come on up. Thank you, Mr. Knight.
So, I'm Chad Coleman with Coleman Engineering, and I guess I'm at your service.
Okay, is there any questions for Mr. Coleman? I don't think there's any questions. I just wanted to come up and see, you know, if you had anything to add to the conversation. If you do not, that's all right.
I hate to pass up the opportunity of, of come up here. I guess I would just say, we're, we're just excited to do this project. We're, water and wastewater projects are all we do. We're, we're specialists, and we range out pretty far. As a result of that, we, we don't mind going distances. We're working all over the state, and so it's, it's normal for us, and we look forward to doing a great job for the city.
All right, thank you very much. Any questions?
I just wanted to say thank you for taking the time to appear personally before us. Appreciate that.
Sure, yeah, I'm happy to do that.
All right. Okay, I'm going to open this up to public comment. Is there any public comment on this particular issue? Seeing no public comment, we're going to close public comment, bring it back for discussion or a motion from the council.
Well, yeah, I have some discussion, because I, I still have questions, and I understand the staff report, and I understand what, Mr. Knight, what you just presented to us, but it hasn't answered some of my questions. I, I've met with Mr. Weir today to reiterate at least part of the questions that I had two weeks ago, and that is, I have not seen anything in our staff report that defines the, the scoring and the criteria, and so what I, what's been communicated in our, in our public meetings and in our staff report is basically, there was a consensus after the interviews that Coleman rose to number one, and while I'm not discounting that, it obviously happened. It, it happened. The, the panel, after the interviews, believed that Coleman was number one. What is still somewhat of a mystery from the standpoint of, of making this clear to everyone, including our, including the public, is, is how this scoring was done, what the scoring was, was there specific scoring associated with the interview process? And I have a hard time just saying, okay, when, here's my dilemma. If, if we're going to cite that there are specific federal requirements required for the selection process, then when it comes to me, then I better have some clear scoring and identification of how all those things were met. I, I just don't feel comfortable with, well, we thought they were best. Why? Because they were. What were their scores? How, tell me how, how we went from, if there was a change, was Coleman number one objectively when they presented their proposal, and then when they went in and interviewed, they confirmed that they were number one? Were they, I mean, when I, I had wonderful reading today of the, what's it called? It's called the Federal Rules for Acquisition. Gosh, talk about some light reading. But I read this, I, I'm assuming, and I, I could be wrong, do those rules apply? Because there's a whole section for construction and architect engineering contracts, is, does that, is that, does maybe Mr. Knight or Mr. Weir could address? Are, are these guidelines applicable to this contract?
Through the mayor, council members. You know, I'm not sure which ones you're referencing, so I'm, I focused on what our funder, the person, the USDA that would be providing the funding to us if we were successful in getting the grant and loan, so I, I looked at the regulations that they provided us. I'm not sure what you're pointing to, but certainly I, I take their input seriously. And, and I think, I, I compliment Eric, who are our Public Works Director. He put together a very good RFP that specifically spelled out all the criteria and what people were going to be graded on, and talked about the interviews, and it's not unusual at all for someone to score very high on paper and then come into an interview and not present themselves well as far as their approach to the project, the team they're going to provide, and that's where Coleman rose to the top. And even, I think Kennedy Jenks was third, so Laco was actually second after all the scoring was done. So, he put together a diverse panel.
Not to interrupt you, Mr. Knight, but the reality is, the council was never given that information in a staff report that says that one firm was, was scored higher or lower than anyone. All we were given was a recommendation to go with this firm. We were, and as I asked two weeks ago, and the question was deferred, it, it would have been helpful, and it's still helpful, and, and I'm, I cannot in good faith approve something when I have, was not told how, how they were scored. Well, it just doesn't, it, it seems like, I, I hear what you're saying, and, and I don't dispute that, that a team could be scored lower or higher in, in the, on paper, and then come into the interview, and you go, you know what, that's the team we want to work with. I, I respect that, and I think that, that, that is certainly reasonable. What we don't know is, is we were never given the information of, of how these teams did at either level. We were just told that this is the team we want to go with.
No, I, excuse me, I did ask about the scoring process.
So did I, and we weren't, and we weren't given an answer.
Yeah, and I felt like, I felt like we were, were providing an answer. If you're talking about number scores, is that what you, are?
What we were told was that after the interviews, the consensus was that these were ranked one, two, three.
Right, so, and, and the process, I felt like I, I got a good answer from Mr. Weir.
Okay.
So, I, I, I felt like I understood the process after I, because I was the one that asked specifically about the scoring process, and I believe it kind of reiterates the whole dialogue in our minutes as well. So, I felt like it was pretty thoroughly vetted at our last meeting about the scoring process.
Mr. Weir, would you like to add anything to this?
Well, I was just going to say, through the mayor again, you know, this is unlike a construction project, where it's just the bottom-line number that's responsive wins the bid. There, there is some subjectiveness to it, but all the scoring was specifically spelled out in the RFP that was provided to all of the responders and advertised, so they knew, you know, what the points they needed to hit, both in writing and then to follow up in the interview. So, we brought forward the company that was clearly, came out number one, and that's what, how the process is fair and equitable, so that's what we did.
May I ask a question, either of you, Mr. Knight or, or Mr. Weir? This particular action tonight is for $119,000 regarding phase one of the project. How, could you remind us as to how many phases there are, and is there a new bid process for each phase?
Yes, in regard to the, the phases of the project, this project was, was set in three different phases. So, there's just phase one, which is the PER, the Preliminary Engineering Report and Environmental. Next phase would be the Plan, Specifications, and Estimate. That phase would come after we actually received the, the authorization from USDA. And then the third phase would be the Construction Management portion. How this is, it was set up, and it's, again, with, with guidance from USDA representatives, is to put together a selection process in which you would choose your engineering firm solely for phase one, and then the, that engineering firm, you would then try to negotiate the contract for phase two and three. So, at this point, there wouldn't necessarily be a separate RFP that would go out for phase two or three, as the engineering firm that completes your PER, they're going to be most knowledgeable and should be most competitive in completing your, your plan, specifications, and estimate phase especially. That being said, you still have to negotiate a contract with that firm. So, if we're unable to reach an agreement with, in regard to compensation, number of hours, then at that point, we would go back out.
Thank you.
And according to the staff report, it looks like we still won't have the funding nailed, right? We stopped them and granted the funding, correct?
Yes, through the mayor, we have not received the grant slash loan. The theory is, and how it's being presented to you, and I didn't, I didn't need to mention the fiscal impact, was if you agree, if you agreed with this agreement and authorized us to execute it, it'd be for the maximum amount of $119,437 that would initially be paid out of our, out of our fund balance in the, in the water capital fund balance.
And then we would be reimbursed.
But then reimbursed if we're successful.
Right.
So, the risk for us was, you know, if we, if we're not successful, if they take us out of the.
So, it would all be a moot point, anyway. However, it looks like there's a possibility that if we didn't go with Coleman, that we would risk jeopardize the entire grant. It's.
I didn't mean to infer that.
I'm just wondering, it, it kind of sounded like it would jeopardize our chances to get the grant.
We're not talking about a grant. We're talking about a loan.
I mean, not a loan, I mean. I'm sorry, correct myself, loan.
What it would do would perhaps jeopardize the reimbursement of this particular money. So, we're going to front the cost in our working fund balance for this particular project if we get the loan and our grant, because if we get the loan or grant, then that would be reimbursable, as long as we followed the proper procurement procedures.
Okay, so this phase one is a grant, but the second phase would be a loan, or, now I'm confused.
No, if I, if I could, the USDA process and the, the loan slash grant application that is, that is before them, as you would go through this PER slash environmental, that will actually complete or be a part of the complete final application for the, for the USDA project. At that point, USDA staff would take a look at our demographics, take a look at the project, and then they would allocate grant money if it's available to the project. So, the remaining portion that maybe isn't allocated a grant, if, if any portions allocated a grant, would then be a loan. So, there is an opportunity for a grant, but at this point, we don't know how much would be a grant, how much would be a loan, because that's decided once the final application is submitted.
Okay, so it's, it's a combination?
It's a combination. Now, this portion that's before you tonight, the contract that's before you tonight, is a reimbursable portion that could be funded with whatever percentage grant, whatever percentage loan. If it's deemed eligible, that we procured it correctly, what's, what's really at, at risk or in jeopardy, at least as part of the discussion, anyway, is.
A reimbursement.
Is a reimbursement or a grant, and if it's an eligible reimbursement, if we go and we don't follow the federal procurement procedures as deemed by USDA, then it wouldn't be an eligible component for reimbursement. Doesn't mean the project wouldn't be, but at least this part wouldn't be.
Okay, all right, great, thanks.
Anything else? All right. Got a motion. Do I have a motion?
So, we're not going to get the scores, then? Is, is my assumption that, that staff has positioned is that we're not going to talk about? And I still would like that somebody, somebody here knows the answer to this question. Do the, does the federal acquisition regulations, does that apply to this along with the USDA specific guidelines? This is a federal, we're talking about the, the federal government here. I'm assuming that there are overarching guidelines that we have to, to, to go by, and that USDA then has specific guidelines that are pertinent to their, things within their purview. So, I, I guess somebody, somebody should be able to answer that, that question.
Again, none of us have exactly what you're looking at in front of you, but it's very possible that they're, they're overlapping. But if the USDA has more, you know, they have specific guidelines that are followed for their awards, and those were what we were given to look at. And I think there are certain instances in which you can use geographic location as a criteria, but it has to be a criteria, and it has to be set out in your RFP from the beginning. That was not one of the criteria listed in our RFP.
Well, now, I have to admit some frustration in this whole thing, because I do feel strongly that we should try and use local preference if we can. We're a poor community. The money would stay here, it would circulate, and we'd be supporting our own people. But that said, we're also a small organization, and $119,000 is a lot of money to take a risk on. And if our funders are saying that it's risky for us to go forward that way, then I, I think we probably need to listen to that. Also, I, I wouldn't want to, to wait any longer to make a decision, because after all, this is a project that, that has a public safety component to it, and, you know, when public safety is concerned, we need to move, move along in an expedient way. So, based upon that, I don't know if there's any other comments, but.
I'll just make one final comment, and then I'll, I'll, I'll let it go. I think that, that if our, if our primary decision is to go forward with this simply because of a fear of, of losing the $119,000 because this may be kicked back through USDA, I think if nothing else, and again, because I don't have a problem with taking responsibility, the fact that we have debated this opens up the door for any party involved, and then is any of the firms that have presented, whether that Kennedy Jenks, Stover, Coleman, or Laco, to be able to, to question the whole process. Now, we created that, obviously, the council has created that by this discussion and the debate, so to act on the sense that we're afraid USDA is going to get involved in this or question this, I think that that's going to happen regardless at this point, so.
So, through the mayor, council members, our Public Works Director does have those scores, if the council would like to review them before making a determination, they're available on the screen, I believe.
You know where I stand.
You guys, you see the scores? You see the scores?
I would. Our last meeting, it seemed like we were told that all the firms were, you know, equally able.
Qualified, yes.
Equally qualified to, to do the work. I mean, that's what drove us to the decision we made there, so I would.
Well, obviously, I do, but you need a consensus, a majority consensus to do that.
I'm okay with you guys seeing the scores. There's three.
All right, so, let's dive into the, dive into the selection process. So, what you see before you is the scoring tabulation. The top part is the, each of the, each of the four firms, and just looking at the written proposal that we received. So, there was, there were, there were six reviewers that reviewed the proposals. The review of the proposals was to narrow it down really to three firms, in which we would then conduct interviews. So, you can see, you can see that each of, you know, as a score, you're going to score firms differently. So, you see, in a score number one, their top firm was 81 points, their bottom firm was 52 points, versus, you know, say another reviewer, like reviewer number six, their top firm was 100, and their bottom firm was 89. So, so that's why you would go ahead and try to normalize this, and you would normalize it to take the person that had. And you would normalize it to take the person that has a top firm at 81 and a bottom one of 52 from having more relevance or more strength than somebody that said groups them together or has a top firm at 100 and they're versus the other top firm at 81. So that's where you go ahead and you normalize it and you just break it into one, two, three, four. So it takes the strength off of any one reviewer. You can see though, at the very end, if you look at just the total raw scoring, and this is, you add up all the points, your top number's your highest. If you look at a ranking of one, two, three, four, then your, your lowest point getter is your, is your top performer. See that Kennedy Jinks was going into the interview process as really the, the number one firm, from based on the proposal. The proposal slash interview process, you have your written exam. And probably the best way to think of an engineering type of consultant process is to think of it as an employee interview, where you have one position that you're selecting. You have qualifications that you're looking for, but most of the time, the people that make it to your interview, they're qualified to do the job. All of these firms were qualified to do the job, but we can only choose one. We couldn't choose them all. So we had to choose just one. That's where, you think of this as almost an entrance exam or some sort of written exam that you would give your applicant pool of say 30 people, and you wanna narrow it down to only a certain few to go to your interview. That's what happened in this top portion here. Narrows it down to three. This panel has these proposals in front of them. They're then interviewing each of these three firms. There's a question and answer period. I believe we spent, I think, 90 minutes with each of these firms. We asked them questions. There might've been portions that we didn't quite understand within the written proposal because they weren't there to answer them. So maybe that got them scored down a little bit on their proposal. If they were able to answer those and answer them effectively and prove that they could do the job, well then when you look at that and you look at their ability to do the job, so you take the proposal and the interview, that's gonna change things. That's what happened in this particular case, is you, we sat down with each of these three firms. There were, there were question and answer periods. At the end of that, we had a very diverse panel. So at the end of it, what you see is when we then took that culmination of, of the proposal, the interview process, and we then asked the five people that conducted the interviews, okay, who is your number one, who's your number one firm? Who do you wanna select to do this job? Who do you think is most capable? Not that all of them aren't qualified, because they are, but who would be the best fit for this organization, for this team, for this project, for this funding source, which is USDA? That is the one, two, three ranking that you see listed before you, kind of in the middle portion of the, of the page. So each of these is one of our scoring criteria. You can see Coleman Engineering was selected as number one by two of the people. Laco was selected as number one by two of the people. Kennedy Jinks, number one. When you look at the, at the middle ranking, again, Coleman Engineering was selected by three of us as number two. So Coleman was either number one or number two by all of us. And that at the end, although we had different recommendations for why maybe somebody thought Coleman was the best, or why somebody thought Kennedy Jinks was the best, there's two people thought Laco was the best. But that in the end, when we looked at it, we said as a consensus, as a group, with diverse backgrounds on us from finance to funding to engineering, Coleman Engineering is the one that stood out as the best firm that, that met this, that met the criteria that we were looking for. Via USDA experience, ability to complete the project, ability to work with this particular team. So in the end, that's why the consensus was Coleman Engineering. If you were to apply a one, two, three ranking to each of these and then add them up again with the lowest being your, your top vote getter, that's that score that you see there, the eight, 10, 13. Again, with Coleman being the recommendation. That's why this staff, this selection committee came back to the, to the council with the recommendation that we did. Is there any one thing that you can point to and say that Kennedy Jinks is not qualified to do this job? No, there's not. They can do it. It's just, so could Coleman, so could Laco. So with this and going into the scoring criteria, that's why we chose Coleman. Hopefully that provided some clarity.
And for the record, you did give us the consensus rankings, the eight, 10, and 13 at the last meeting. I, I recall that.
Any questions? I would just like to say that, uh, you know, the staff is the ones we're gonna be working with them, and it comes down to that choice of who you wanna work with and if there's, you know, consensus of the staff, who will be working with the, uh, with the engineering firm. I think that has some weight to it for the recommendation. Because, I mean, even though we would love to have local, you know, contractors working with them, and not saying that our local contractors would be a pain in the butt to work with, but if you feel more comfortable with Coleman Engineering, I would go with the recommendation of the staff.
Just, you know, just for clarity on that particular point, for, for myself, we have a good working relationship with Kennedy Jinks, with Stover Engineering. We've done several projects. We're working on one right now, the Fire Hall project that's going into construction. So it, it definitely wasn't any one person's personal choice. It was just this overall team's recommendation as, as the selection.
Okay. Do we have any motions? I'll make the motion.
I'll, I'll go ahead and make a motion. Based upon what I started to say earlier, uh, and it, my opinion hasn't changed now and seeing the way this was scored, uh, we all know interviews are sometimes a little bit, um, subjective, but it looked like, uh, it looks like everything was done in accordance with, uh, procedure. And my issues had to do with local preference and wanting to have local preference. And apparently in this particular project, that's not going to be possible. So I would, uh, recommend approval that the city attorney and the city manager to sign an agreement with Coleman Engineering, Inc. for engineering services and required environmental documents as part of the final USDA rural development application for the 2015 Water System Improvements Project in the not to exceed amount of $119,437.
I'll second the motion and I apologize to both parties that are present tonight. It's awkward and, and, uh, we know that you're both capable and so, but I'm seconding the motion. So thank you. Thank you both.
Okay, the motion has been made and seconded. Could you please pull the vote?
Councilmember Hawley?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Councilmember Short?
Yes.
Pro-Ten Men Score?
No.
Mayor Gasno?
Yes, and that passes four to one. Thank you very much. Thank you for coming up. Thank you for being here. Okay, on to item number 11. City Manager Recruitment. Interim City Manager Knight.
Well, thank you again, Mayor Gasno and council members. As you're very well aware, um, you entered into an agreement with, um, me as your interim city manager. And, um, during that interview process, um, it was determined that a very high priority for the council and mayor was for me to lead a national recruitment, um, for a permanent city manager. So with that, we've put together, um, a draft recruitment brochure for your input. Specifically, I was looking for input on all of it, but especially the profile to make sure we're advertising for what, um, the council would like, what characteristics they would like in a, their new city manager. We did jump out ahead of the ballgame a little bit, and we have been advertising it through a variety of, um, sources and media. We're, we're on the, um, the, online version of Western City, but the print version won't be till, um, won't come out until April. And so I think that, a lot of that was driving the proposed deadline of April 29th, um, to receive all of the applications. But we intend to get that out through a number of different, um, associations such as the Municipal Management Association, League of Western Cities, Public CEO, and then the ICMA Newsletter and Jobs Available, as well as a bunch of mass mailings, um, mostly in the state of California. So we, we do have it out there, but when we start handing out full packets, we wanna make sure that the council and mayor are comfortable with the profile language especially. And maybe even the ending date is for discussion, if you wanna pump that up. So with that, that concludes my brief comments. If you have any input, we'll make those changes.
Anybody have any input?
I have one question, um, very well put together. I was very impressed with it. My question has to do with the final paragraph. Where it says a bachelor's degree from an accredited college or university in public or business, excuse me, business administration or a related field is required. I was concerned about the word required, but I'm unsure, um, if that, um, kinda nails us down to a fault or did we fix that by putting the words in there, or a related field? I just didn't know what the council's thoughts on that. My, um, my opinion is that if we mandate a certain bit of education, we may be limiting ourselves to a, um, maybe not the best candidate. So I was trying to keep our options open.
I defer to the former HR director to my right.
I, I would, I would say that, that terminology is, is really common and it can be interpreted either as strictly or as loosely as we want. Related fields, in this case, could be accounting, it could be personnel, it's a wide range. So I don't think we're gonna be narrowing things very much, especially with the following sentence, it speaks to the importance of the essential duties and the, and the, you know, the prior experience. I think, put together, I think we'll be able to meet out the, the best qualified candidates. But I don't know, Mr. Knight?
Yeah, and I, I agree with that. And that last sentence also, an equivalent combination of education and experience sufficient to successfully perform the essential duties gives us room to consider some, somebody that might pull just a little shorter that first down there. Outstanding. Thank you.
Uh, I have a question. On flyers, is it very common that you would put the, um, mission statement for a city on there? I would kinda like to see that if it's, if there's room. I hate to mess up the set and everything, but do, do you usually see that? It's kind of an important thing and for me personally, but I don't know. I don't wanna, I know you have it all set up and it looks great and I really like everything else. I mean, I, I, but I'm just wondering, I don't usually look at city manager flyers, so I don't know.
So certainly if it's the consensus of the council, we can add the mission statement. And also, um, a council member also talked about, we should probably reference keeping a, an eye on the strategic plan. So that might be something we could slip in there to.
Put that in there. Yeah, I, I would definitely agree with the strategic plan.
Yeah, and, you know, you could maybe take out one of these glorious photos on here and use that space. I don't know where you.
Oh, I don't know.
I don't know where you got those.
I like the photos. Maybe take out, um, one of the second seals of the city.
You know, when I was doing recruitment, it seemed like we always had to include a, a picture of the state of California, a little star where Crescent City is, cause nobody seemed to know where, where Crescent City was actually located.
Exactly.
I don't know if you have room for that.
And we should add some more doors to it.
Some more what?
You know, you start building something, you start adding more doors to it. By doing it by committee, that's the problem. It looks great.
That is a problem we throw in the kitchen sink after a while.
Exactly. So, yeah, uh, I would imagine the consensus would get our mission statement and then our strategic goals on there. Definitely also, if there's any references, we do have them go to our website, but maybe, uh, specifically to look at, um, city information like our strategic plan, something. I'm sure whoever's looking at it are gonna be doing the research, hopefully, so.
They better.
That was kinda my thought. I kinda like it just the way it is.
Alright.
I don't think we need a map though, because it says exactly where we're located. 20 miles south of the Oregon border on the Pacific Ocean.
Yeah, maybe, maybe take out that second city seal on the second page. Put our stuff there.
Put, put our, uh, mission statement?
Yep.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor Gasno, that was very good input.
I got one.
Oh, wait.
Sorry.
It's alright.
I, I guess this is just very, very personal from my vantage point of, of, of what we're looking for and what I'm looking for. I, I just added a, a sentence and I, the council can just define whether or not this is something they also value. I, I wrote down that when I, as far as looking for somebody, I added this sentence, have a desire to make a personal investment in the city and establish a long-term relationship with the community. If I'm gonna look for our next city manager, I want somebody, I, I, this is just me personally speaking. I want somebody who wants to come here and see this as their future, not as, as a stepping stone to someplace else. And I'd like to say that in a positive manner, but I, I wanna say that. That's, that's just me, so, but I will defer to the council.
I think maybe we could discuss that during the interviews.
Yeah, I think that we need to, well.
But we, you know, there's, I mean, they can say that they will do that, but you can't hold their, I mean.
Oh, of course not. But I think that a candidate ought to know that that's something we value. It might be a person who would not send an application if they knew that, that the council was saying, we want somebody to come here and plant roots. They might not send their application if, if they knew that that was something we valued. If we don't all value it, then I respect that, but I do. And I want our candidates to know that, that I'm looking for somebody who wants to make an investment in the future of this community, wherever they live. They may be somebody, you know, in Kansas that is, just sees that and go, I'd like to, to invest my life and my future in, in Crescent City, California.
You could put it something succinct, like is willing to become invested in the community, something like that.
Yeah.
I don't know.
I like.
You could squeeze that in, maybe.
I, I can agree with that. We've, we've talked about that just about every time. We've talked about the city manager position was hoping to get somebody that would be here for the long, long term. So, I like the idea.
I'll send that to you, Mr. Knight, that, that one sentence. And then you guys, you can look at that and see what you think of as far as verbiage or whatever.
Thank you, and I'm confident our city clerk captured it too.
Thank you.
Okay. Is that it, Mr. Knight on that?
Yes, thanks.
Thank you very much. Okay, we are on to now city. We are off of our regular scheduled agenda, on to city council items, legislative matters. Are there any legislative matters? Anybody?
Do you remember when I emailed you? I didn't, I didn't write it down. I, I can look on my phone.
Do you wanna come back to that? Is there any city manager report?
Excuse me, um, mayor and council, no city managers' reports, but we do have, um, a number of things we were gonna ask. We're gonna provide a report on it if it's at the time.
Okay. Alright.
So with that, I think, um, the public, and I'll get back to yours. Um, with that, the Public Works Director is gonna give us an update on water conservation.
We so do love to hear about water conservation. Oh, you gotta turn on his mics so everybody can hear him.
Nice try, Miss Scott. Uh, yes, at least it was a, a nice sunny day to talk about water conservation, other than the, uh, three inches of rain that we received on Saturday and I believe an inch yesterday. Uh, from the reports that I've seen, we are set to receive another two to three inches this coming Wednesday, Thursday, followed by another two to three inches over the weekend. So, the, uh, storms continue to roll in, which is great. You know, we've, we have needed the water. It's definitely been dry the last couple of years. This year hasn't been the case so much. I believe we're over 120% of our, uh, yearly total, uh, to date so far. So we are looking at this. We've been, uh, in conversation with, uh, with Senator McGuire just about water conservation in general. We've, uh, the council authorized us to send that letter about a month ago to the state uh, in regard to the extension of the water conservation requirements. So that was sent. The, uh, state water board has stated that what they would like to do is, uh, take into consideration our weather, weather patterns on the North Coast over the next couple of months, which was back then February and March. So we plan on going before the, the board again, possibly here in April, uh, to present our case. So we're currently working with, uh, with the, uh, senator with that. Uh, we'll be in conjunction with the county. Supervisor Howard is, uh, is kinda spearheading that initiative from their side, as well as community agencies from Humboldt County as well. So all of that is kind of, uh, is, is going on. As far as our water conservation report, we met our 16% again for this month. So I believe we're doing that on best management practices and then also fixing the leaks that, that have been out there. So we're doing a good job meeting those requirements. But we do intend on, uh, asking the state to take a look at the North Coast as our weather patterns here are quite a bit different than they are in Southern California. Uh, we will, uh, we are coming back to the council at the next meeting to, uh, to look at some of those statistics that we have. at some of those statistics that we have and, uh, request, uh, possible action from the council, council in regard to those discussions with the state.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Weir?
Nope.
Okay. Choose a date and time. Are you, are you guys ready for your legislative matters? Let me bounce back.
I'm sure Councilmember Murray, um, sent us, uh, some information, um, after the agenda was published, but did want to talk about it under legislative matters. And, um, she received an action alert from the California League of Cities.
We probably all did, from Sarah.
To oppose AB 1707, Linder, which is, um, in my reading of it, it's a significant expansion of the California Public Records Act. Um, they've given us, they would love to have us, um, send a letter, um, with possibly the mayor's signature. Um, and it looks like they're going to meet, the committee's going to meet before our next regularly scheduled meeting, and I think that's why I was approached, to see if we could talk about this. Um, so again, it is, it'll, it'll, the opinion is that it's a significant expansion of the Public Records Act. That'll place incredible burdens on cities, is unnecessary, and will open the door to civil and criminal litigation. There's a sample letter for us to prepare, the talking points, there's about, eh, there's quite a few of them, but they all go to the, the burden on, on cities, and I'm sure it would be an unfunded mandate, but, um, so AB, these are the talking points that came from the league. AB 1707 will place an incredible burden on cities, is unnecessary, and will open the door to civil and criminal litigation with limited staff. Um, cities will have a really hard time, um, providing all the records that they're asking for. Um, when factoring additional staff time, AB 1707 would be incredibly burdensome. The only way to specifically cite each document admitted from the, from the Public Records Act request would require our city, um, to create a discovery or privileged log cataloging the responsive documents for each request it receives. Um, the proposed amendments are not helpful and nor do they mitigate any potential negative impacts of AB 1707. Um, and then there's a reference to the California Supreme Court stating that, um, creating a privileged log would almost certainly launch satellite litigation over the adequacy of its descriptions. Um, and the, again, this came in too late to put it in your, your packet and give you a real good, long chance to look it over. Um, so we could bring it back at the next meeting and/or I could prepare a letter for the mayor, if, um, the council would like, based on the boilerplate that it sounds like all of you received.
Do you have consensus to send a letter?
I, I think it'd be prudent to send it before our next meeting, so.
Okay. So please, yes, uh, go ahead and draft that letter and I'll gladly sign it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Council. So, I think our clerk was going to talk to you about a date and time for a dual meeting. Ms. Scott?
Yes, so, um, uh, the, uh, Fire and Rescue Board would like to meet with the city council to unveil the plaque, um, for the new organization. They would like to do so at the Washington, uh, station, um, and so they would like to hold a meeting there. And they gave me the dates of March 15th or 22nd, or April 12th or 19th, that they would like to offer to you to do that.
One more time on the dates.
March 15th or 22nd, or April 12th or 19th.
Let's see, we got a Del Norte Solid Waste meeting on the 15th?
They have time?
They didn't give me a specific time, they said in the evening.
Oh.
So I believe that they typically meet, I believe at 6:00 PM. Actually, Darren, you should.
I was thinking it was 5:30.
Is it 5:30?
I could probably give it 15th or the 22nd. It's a Tuesday.
15th is good, for me.
15th is not. I won't move down.
Okay.
20?
22nd?
22nd is fine with me.
All right. 22nd?
March 22nd?
Yes.
Yeah, that's fine.
They, they're all Tuesdays, yeah.
It's good for me.
5:30?
All right. Can you send out a reminder on that? Thank you. Hey, how about that Acela training?
Okay, also, um, Acela, uh, is 90% up and running. We would like to present that to you and get you trained on your iPads for that. Um, they are very flexible and working with us. I wanted to offer up, like we tried last time, prior to the next meeting, so, uh, 4:15 on the 21st, but if that time doesn't work, we could definitely work with your schedules to find something.
And we'd be able to get it in 15, or 45 minutes?
Yes, it's about a 30-minute training.
Okay. So for us, it'd be like an hour.
Prior to the co-session.
So 21st before our meeting, 4:15? Who has snacks that day?
That'd be me.
I think that goes back to somebody that didn't have snacks tonight.
Okay.
That rule wasn't applied, but somebody else. Are we setting new precedent?
Okay, the 21st, right? Okay, got it.
And I came back with snacks the next week, too. She saved, she saved me with the pizza.
I don't recall that.
I don't recall.
I have no recollection.
Yes. There you go. You guys are ready for congressional hearings? Okay. So, uh.
Ted Cruz and all is really here, so.
I know. Can't wait. Agreed. That brings us to reports and, uh, thank you very much, Ms. Scott. Um, brings us to reports, uh, council travel, training reports. Anybody want to go first? All right, thank you, Catherine.
I have a lot.
All right.
Sorry. I heard that. Okay. Um, I popped into the Solid Waste meeting right before our council meeting on the 16th. The next day, um, I had the opportunity to meet with two, um, representatives from the VA's office in Roseburg, plus our new, um, representative for the V, the veterans, um, here, Aaron Green, Greenberg, I can't remember his last name properly, because I don't have his card with me and I didn't write, write it down. And we had, and a conference call with Cindy Lehman, Lemon, from, uh, the VA's office in Roseburg, plus our own Megan Miller from, um, the Housing Authority, and Martha McClure was there as well regarding, um, veterans that are in need of, of housing here in our community. And there is a very good possibility that, um, we could get housing vouchers across state lines. So, um, stay tuned for more on that, but that could help, um, some of our, our veterans that don't have any housing at all here in our community. So that's pretty exciting. Um, and then the next day, the 18th, we had our Last Chance Grade Stakeholders Meeting, and Congressman Huffman was here and he was, um, spoke to us. And, um, he is working with Governor Brown to declare a federal disaster which would kick, um, up to the federal level, which we all know is going to take an act of Congress for us to get the funding that we really need, which is, it could be up to a billion dollars possibly. But, um, so, uh, we are, he's working on that for us, and, um, we know that the road is bad due to all the rain, so let's hope that that strategy will work for us. And, um, then on Monday, the 22nd, um, I attended LAFCO and we, um, approved the Martin Ranch, um, water will and some of the, um, Birch Ocean View, um, well, they had their lawyer here and whatnot, but, um, we did approve it, so, um, we'll see how that works. The Birch Ocean View representatives were not happy with that outcome, but we believe that it would be more of a planning commission issue for development, not, not the actual sphere of influence issue, so. And then we had a, um, the Airport JPA meeting on the 25th, which was a special meeting with presentations on funding for the, um, Terminal Airport project, and, um, they will be coming to us to talk about, um, funding, um, in the future, very near future, I believe. Matthew Leitner has been in touch with you, Mr. Knight, um, the Airport Manager, Airport Executive Director. And then I headed down to Willets for the Redwood Empire Division meeting, which was a really very good meeting. Um, Willets was a very great host and, um, I, we had all of our meetings at the new Frank R. Howard Memorial Hospital, which is on the east side of 101, and, um, we had a presentation by a company called ABM Building and Energy, and I believe, um, Sarah Rounds has sent us, sent you all the, um, the information on that, that there's a good way to upgrade our energy systems from streetlights to, um, our water meters. They provide all the construction and funding and, and I think maybe we should at least consider, um, what they did, what they presented to us. And we had a tour of the new state-of-the-art hospital as well. It's, they have everything. It, it was most impressive. It, the, the hospital itself cost $64 million, so, um, it was, it was, um, pretty, pretty impressive. And they said that the, um, new bypass will be completed in August, so, in case people were wondering about that, so. Um, yeah, so that was, that was, uh, pretty, pretty interesting. And then, um, we had another airport meeting and we started approving all of our grant applications for the actual terminal project, um, which, um, I'm pretty excited about us moving forward with building that, and that was on, uh, March 3rd. And then I attended the, some of the JC's basketball tournaments, our 48th Annual Basketball Tournament, which is quite, quite impressive with the pouring down rain on Friday. And, um, I attended part of that on Saturday as well, and then the fish fry for the crab fishermen at the fairgrounds on Saturday, the 5th. That's it.
Who wants to follow, Catherine? Hey, Mr. Shore.
Yeah, this is not going to sound very impressive. Went to the, uh, Redwood Coast Transit Authority meeting on the 17th. Um, talked about possibly partnering with the tribe, uh, and, uh, not consolidating, but, uh, making the routes a little more efficient going to, to Arcata, that's, sounds good. Um, missed the Transit Authority meeting on the 4th. Um, however, back on the 20th, our, uh, Public Works Director, Mr. Weir, and I participated in cleaning out the city station, city fire street, or city fire station. Pardon me for not being able to talk. Our, uh, our two antique trucks are in storage and the other fire trucks that are in service are distributed around the, the district. And, uh, it's going, it's going well, looking forward to the, uh, retrofit that the fire station's going to go on. Found some interesting bits of history in there. It was, uh, some of it was pretty colorful. We had a good time, spent about five or six hours there and, uh.
Is that going to be on a website, that history? Oh, no? It'd be all redacted, right?
A lot of it's going to go through, probably in the museum. We found a response log book, just, uh, for one. One of the antique fire trucks is number four, and in one of the logbooks in the 30s, there was a note off to the side that said, "First run for engine number four." So, it's, it's pretty neat.
Yeah.
So.
That's cool.
Um, have to compliment, uh, Chief Wakefield, he put a lot of organization and, uh, pre-work into, into that event. There's a lot of people there helping and it went very smoothly.
Thank you.
And that's all I have.
Great. Perfect. Mr. Hawley?
Okay, I'll be, I'll be quick. Um, I, I too attended the Last Chance Grade Stakeholder Meeting, and I thought that was a good one, and I appreciated Congressman Huffman for, that he was there. Uh, we're not going to meet for at least a couple of months, there's some other work that has to be done behind the scenes. But, uh, contrary to the recent editorial, um, we are working very hard at trying to find some, some solutions to this. Uh, we're not, we're not bureaucrats shoving it aside. When, when we're talking about up to a billion dollars, uh, we're talking about a very complex project, and we're trying to do it in an organized fashion, utilizing all the advocacy we can have. So we will be coming back to the council for, periodically probably, for letters and, and, and any kind of, uh, proclamations we want to make. And so be prepared for that, but we're, the timing has to be such that it's beneficial as far as its, its influence on our legislators. So, Last Chance Grade, um, I did, I mentioned this last week, but I did play for the Valentine's Dance at, at the Elks Lodge, and the, uh, the minute said we were the Tsunami Swingers and not Tsunami Swing. And I don't want there to be any confusion that we're not swingers. Uh, but, but that was a nice function and well-attended. Uh, I, with Mr. Enscore, we did attend the two-by-two-by-two, uh, meeting with the parks, the county, and Crescent City, and Blake may want to speak more to that, but, um, I think it was a beneficial, uh, meeting, and, uh, I don't know, I came away not nearly as alarmed as I was initially regarding, uh, the withdrawal of the gift shop area there with the parks, because, uh, he'll, again, I don't know what you're going to say, but, but, uh, we, it looks like it'll be seasonal. It won't be leaving our city altogether. During the height of the tourist season, we will have, uh, Redwood Parks gift shop and, uh, visitor center to be here in town, so. So we, we talked a lot, about a lot of other things. One is the, uh, the centennial for the parks and the fact that our city's going to play a pretty major role in that, and there's some meetings coming up, uh, on a regular basis to talk about what that looks like, but this could be a real tourism attraction to our area, and, uh, and the parks want to work with us, so we look forward to some future meetings. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Enscore?
Attended the Del Norte Solid Waste Management Authority meeting. We, um, one of the things that, that's, uh, on the radar is looking at the, getting permission from residents that are in, in adjacent to their property, to the closed landfill, um, to do some water sampling of their wells. Um, if that provides an opportunity, we can get that done, that could save us, the authority, um, nearly $30,000 a year in fines if we can show that their, uh, adjacent properties are not being impacted, uh, by the, the landfill currently. Um, that's still in process, but I think that's a great thing of trying to figure out a way to mitigate this, uh, ongoing expense of, of the landfill, which is, it's going to be an ongoing expense, but if we can lower those, those fines by reaching out to the community and showing that we're not impacting, it's not impacting them, then I think that's a great thing. Uh, did attend LAFCO, where we did approve the, uh, service extension, water service extension to the Martin Ranch. Participated with, uh, Mr. Taylor in, in an interview of our newest planning commissioner. I'm excited that the planning commission now is fully staffed again. Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors meeting, uh, spent some time with Mr. Weir, who walked me through the B Street, uh, process and all that they're doing down there, and made sure I didn't fall in any of the holes. Um, did attend the two-by-two-by-two with, uh, Mr. Hawley and our city manager, Mr. Knight, uh, with the county and the Redwood, Redwood State and, um, National Park Service. The, uh, the plan, as I understand it, is to close the, the downtown visitor center, um, in the off-season, that it, that it will be open through this, this, uh, summer, and that in the fall, after, the, the idea being that it will be open Labor Day, uh, Memorial Day to Labor Day in the future. And that the, uh, the visitor center at Hauchi will be the primary, uh, entry point and visitor center for, uh, Del Norte County. They have, um, they have articulated that they have space to do exhibits and provide more resources to people who are traveling through our state and national parks that is not available in the space, the 800 or so square feet that they have in the downtown, um, uh, facility. I expressed my concern that, that this pilot project of closing it seasonally this year, that it doesn't become a pilot project, and then the year after that, they decide, "Well, let's just keep Hauchi open." I personally believe, and I think the community, at least from- Hiuchi open." I personally believe, and I think the community, at least from those who have, has shared with me, feel very strongly that we need a presence, um, downtown in Crescent City for, for our state and national, uh, Redwood Parks. Um, and I, I will know more about visitor numbers, but the numbers that, that we got just off the cuff, um, from the Park Service indicates that, that currently the, the, the number of visitors downtown far exceeds what's coming into our own visitor center. So, though, but, there will be, they, uh, they will be doing a presentation to the Visitor Bureau tomorrow, which I'm on, so I will hear those numbers and report back to you, um, what those actual numbers are. Um, but I, i- it is something I think we can be concerned about. I, I do agree with Mr. Hawley that, that I appreciate the fact that they're sharing what they are doing, and, and to their credit, I will say that, that, uh, that Steve Prokop was very apologetic of saying, "We should have reached out and made sure all the partners understood what our plans were," and I appreciated that, uh, from him saying, you know, "This was an oversight." We don't, we do value the cities as a partner, and they do acknowledge that the land that their office is, is on was given to them by the, the city, and they are aware of that. They do not have any intentions of moving their office space at all, or closing their office, just the visitor center. And what will be open seasonally, as I understand, it will primarily be a gift shop. It will be staffed primarily by volunteers from the association, if I understood correctly, not necessarily by rangers as it has been in the past. So, we'll keep you abreast on that. I'll have a better idea again, hearing it a second time after the Visitor Bureau meeting tomorrow. Anything else?
All right. Thank you. Let's see, I have a pretty short report here. Uh, Del Norte Solid Waste, but I think we had that meeting before our meeting last time. Redwood Coast Transit Authority on the 17th of February, which we made the motion to go to the special meeting on the 4th of March of the, uh, Redwood Coast Transit Authority, where we interviewed two, uh, firms to, um, take over the management of the Redwood Coast Transit Authority, and we made a decision. Uh, you'll hear about that, um, just recently. We're going through negotiations now, so we don't know exactly who's going to be there, but that was, uh, the main thing. Um, also, I just want to, uh, tell everybody that, uh, coming up on March 19th, which is Saturday through the 26th, is Tsunami Safe Days again. This is the 52nd anniversary of the 1964 tsunami that, uh, changed the face of Crescent City. Uh, on the 50th, we had a whole week of events. Uh, last year, we, uh, had a few events, and then this year, again, we're back into a week. So, starting on, uh, Saturday, March 19th, we have the Fisherman's Benefit, uh, we have presentations, we got Downtown Art Walk, barbecue, uh, Engine 101 Smokehouse and Live Music. Ooh, where's that at? Um, uh, kiosk guided walking tours. So, if you haven't been downtown yet to see the, uh, Tsunami Kiosks, please do that. Uh, more presentations. And then Sunday, we have the, uh, the Tsunami Safe Fun Run. That'll be starting, uh, around, uh, 11:00 AM for registration, and, uh, some other, we have another, uh, Black Hat Barbecue. Another barbecue?
It's good.
I'm going to miss that, too, unfortunately. Um, more kiosk walking tours. And then Wednesday, uh, the eighth grader's going to go around, uh, town and do the Tsunami Walking Tour, and then they're going to do a live code test. So, on Wednesday, all our radio, and that is, uh, March 23rd, all our radios are going to go off. You're going to see planes in the air. Well, if the weather cooperates, of course. Um, you'll see fire trucks in the streets. I don't know if you guys, there are fire trucks, but all the sirens will be going off. I don't think we're, I don't think we're, oh, we actually, I don't know if we're doing the live walk, but, uh, definitely, you'll hear it on the radio and stuff like that. So, don't be alarmed, it is a test, but if it is not a test, they will tell you. So, Tsunami Safe Days coming back, Crescent City. A lot of good events. Uh, get out and enjoy. Other than that, if there's no further business, and we are-
One tiny thing, Mr. Mayor.
Yes?
Earlier, I don't know what the proper way to do this is. Earlier, Mike Saber talked about what could be some safety liability issues with Brother Jonathan.
Oh, yeah.
Um, I, I'm assuming that we can't act on that?
No, we drag staff to look into it.
To, um, take a look at that and keep our public-
They're always looking at it.
Yeah, through your, through the mayor, we, we did her the comments, and so we'll be, we'll be looking into it. And if we, if we need to report back to council on anything, we'll certainly do that.
Yeah, I'd go take a walk down there, but, uh, the weather's not going to cooperate with that. I understand that.
Thank you.
Have your drone flyby.
What?
Have your drone flyby.
Yeah, I should do a drone flyby. Yeah. It's not all weather, unfortunately. I was going to say, yo, B Street, I wouldn't do some drone flies down the construction, but we got to find a nice day, unfortunately. Okay, other than that, we will adjourn to our next regularly scheduled meeting, which will be March, no, not 21st. Eh, it's the 21st. Meeting on March 21st, 2016, 5:00 PM. Everybody have a great evening.
11:15 PM, sir.
Oh, yeah, well, that's us. We're doing training. All the rest of us, uh, at the co-session, see everybody on 21st.